Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 7th, 2012 at 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DeLorenzo.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda, approval of the minutes of the January 17th City Council meeting and the January 31st Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
If there's no additions, I'll motion to approve.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing future business leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Week. Who's got that one?
Bill.
Mr. McGuire.
Ask me, ask me.
On behalf of my students, we did make it. I want to thank you.
Yes, I don't even have.
Whereas the future business leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda is a nonprofit educational organization whose first chapter was established in Johnson City, Tennessee in 1942, good year, and whereas this organization has grown now to encompass over 250,000 members nationwide in middle schools, high schools, colleges, universities, career and technical schools, and private business schools, and whereas FBLA PBL is a professional business organization dedicated to bringing business and education together in a positive working relationship through innovative leadership and career development programs, and whereas members perform community service activities and strive to build a student's understanding of the realities of the modern business world, and whereas FBLA PBL teaches middle school, high school, and college students business and leadership principles and assists in the transition from school to work. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, in recognition of the contributions FBLA PBL has made, hereby officially declares February 5 through February 11, 2012 as Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Week dated the 7th day of February 2012. John Nets, Mayor, City of Palm Coast.
Thank you.
Please let me reschedule 20 minutes.
I just want to thank you on behalf of the high school students at every section. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing February 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2012 as Lions White Cane Days. Mr. DeLorenzo.
Whereas the Palm Coast Lions Charities Incorporated is a member of District 35O of Lions International, and whereas the aforementioned Lions Charities Incorporated has a major project, the helping of sightless and the sight affected afflicted, and will contribute thousands of dollars and many hundreds of hours to this effort, and whereas this money will be contributed to the Confluent Center for the Multi-Handicapped Blind, North Florida Eye Bank, School for Leader Dogs, Braille Association of Mid-Florida, Florida School for the Deaf and Blind, Glaucoma and Diabetic Clinic Supplies, and fund visual examination and eyeglasses for needy schoolchildren and adult citizens of Palm Coast, and whereas the aforementioned Lions Club is sponsoring White Cane Days Friday through Sunday, February 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2012, to give the people of Palm Coast an opportunity to assist the Lions in this worthy project of helping the sight afflicted. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, urges all its citizens to support the worthwhile efforts of the Lions Club of Palm Coast, and be it further proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, in recognition of the contributions Lions Charities Incorporated has made to the citizens of Palm Coast, hereby officially declares February 17th, 18th, and 19th, 2012 as Lions White Cane Days dated this 7th day of February 2012, City of Palm Coast, Florida. Mayor John Nets. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the City Council. My name's Ralph John, I'm the president this year of the Lions Club. This is a critical year. Our needs are great and our donations are down, so the White Cane Week is our most important week of the year. It's our biggest charity, so we thank you very much for your help, and I have two invitations for everyone in the room. The first is our Pancake Breakfast is April 14th at Matanzas High School, and then on the same day, we're having a Walk for the Blind, a charity walk, so we invite you all to attend, and the other is, we need new members, so everyone is welcome to join our club, and we do take husbands and wives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lions, and thank you for all your service to our community. Agenda item number four, an ordinance relating to the application to rezone a parcel of property from public semi-public and estate two to master planned development. I would point out that this is a quasi-judicial matter. After the attorney reads the ordinance by title, I will ask each council member to declare any ex parte communications that they may have had. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Sections 2.05 and 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. Amending the official zoning map for parcel ID number 7113170348T20010 and 07113170348T2 40s of the public records of Flagler County, Florida, containing 43.29 more or less acres from public semi-public or PSP to Estate 1, that's EST1, and to Master Planned Development Zoning District or MPD, providing for conflict severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, this will be the appropriate time to declare any ex parte communications.
None.
Your honor, I am in possession of two written communications from the citizens in the Cypress Knoll area.
Thank you.
Yes, I was contacted by several residents, but my decision will be based on testimony here today, and, Mr. Mayor, I also have a question for the attorney.
Please.
Bill, the applicant is an association member of my employer, and I just wanted to, my question was if that puts me in a position of a conflict of interest.
Councilmember, your question refers to a section of the Florida statutes, Chapter 112, which says that any official, public official, may not participate or vote on any matter which would, the term is in or apply to your special private gain or loss or to that of a principal with whom you're retained. The three factors that the courts and the Attorney General have looked at are the size of the class of persons affected, and whether or not there will be a direct or indirect effect on your principal, which would be the Home Builders Association, or whether such gain from the measure would be too remote or speculative. It's my opinion that since there is a large number of members of the Home Builders Association, and you are simply employed by an employee of this association, that each one of those factors would make it so that you do not have a conflict of interest under Chapter 112 3143. Thank you.
Mr. Meeker?
I've also received ex parte communication in the form of some emails and some letters, and of course, none of that information will affect my ability to render an opinion or a verdict on this issue before us tonight.
I had a meeting with a representative of the Cypress Knolls Association at city offices and have had several emails regarding this matter. My judgment tonight will be based on the testimony here tonight. That being said, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is another classic land use case. It's directly a result of a number of parcels we have throughout Palm Coast, affectionately referred to as reserve parcels. They are parcels that when ITT originally developed Palm Coast, they specifically left reserve parcels for future development, and they are sprinkled all over the community, primarily in our residential areas. A good example that we've had to deal with as a city and City Council dealt with a few years ago is Ryan's Landing. If you recall, those of you that may recall that that was a residential development right in the middle of a neighborhood. Sawgrass is the latest one that has gotten a lot of publicity, another reserve parcel that has the neighborhood quite upset because of what the current owner is proposing in that neighborhood. And then the latest one tonight is in Cypress Knolls. So this is actually one of those typical land use cases that we deal with here on a fairly regular basis, and this particular one, we've been working on it for about six years, and Ray, because Larry could not be here, so we had to go the second string, right? Larry? Ray is going to make a very complicated presentation to you because reserve parcels are a complicated issue, so please bear with us as we try to get through all the facts in this case. So Ray, take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. City Councilmembers, Ray Tyner, Planning Manager. Let me first orient you where the property is located. We're talking about two pieces of property. The city owns 14, approximately 14 acres, and CPH and HG Lots, which I would refer to them as the developer, right now owns about 29 plus or minus acres. The property is located just north of State Road 100, just west of East Hampton Boulevard, and lies east of Ebtide. Currently, we have a future land use map designation on the property as Green Belt. Green Belt designation permits maximum entitlements of one unit per acre. Both the city-owned property to the north again and the southern piece both have a Green Belt designation. The zoning for the property, of course, the city property is public semi-public. At one point, you may recall that there was some thoughts of having a public park on that property. And to the south, of course, the developer's property is owned Estate 2. What we're proposing tonight as part of the settlement agreement is to rezone the property into a master plan development, and I'll get into a little bit more details of why the master plan development makes sense from a comprehensive standpoint. Let me first give a little bit background of the property. Back in 2004, the city initiated and adopted a comprehensive plan, specifically a future land use map. Previously, the entire city was under the county future land use map as well as the zoning of the county. Back in 2004, when we adopted the property as Green Belt, ICI at the time, the developer, filed an administrative challenge with the Department of Community Affairs challenging our action. In lieu of litigation, again, as Mr. Landon pointed out, this has been going on for quite some time, the parties agreed to negotiate instead of going into litigation. The proposed plan before you, part of your package, is a negotiated settlement. You have the settlement agreement along with the master plan development. Let me, hopefully this graphic will be helpful in illustrating why the developer has challenged the City of Palm Coast. Under number one is what the county designation was before the city initiated a Green Belt Flume designation on the property. As you see, approximately 29 acres, they were entitled to a maximum of about 86 units according to the county flume designation. When the city designated the property as Green Belt, those entitlements went down to 28 units for the entire property. That's the challenge. If the litigation moves forward, if the challenge moves forward, and the administrative hearing judge determines that the city was in the wrong, the most likely scenario would be that they would revert back to the county designation of the 86 units or three units per the acre, and then the city would require then, they would have to apply for a future land use map change that is the most similar to the county designation, which that would be our residential flume designation, what permits a maximum 12 units per acre or 344 units. The proposal that we have tried to reach with the applicant and what's before you is a proposal that is less than what the previous county designation was of 2.8 units with a maximum of 60 units for the property. When we started to negotiate and look at the different development plans for the project, we received a series of variations of site plans and conceptual site plans that we've reviewed. Some of those site plans consisted up to 81 residential units for the property. The plan had, the open space was really disconnected, you had flag lots, you had overdevelopment, you had significant wetland impacts on some of those previous proposed plans. There was even lots that were proposed that fronted East Hampton Boulevard, and from a planning perspective, you want to try to limit those driveways on some of your neighborhood roads. There was inadequate means of getting in and out of the site. As you know, our comprehensive plan requires two means of ingress and egress for 50 units or more. So what city staff did after we received several of these renditions of site plans, we looked at our comprehensive plan, and we looked at that as a guide, and we came up really with some plan objectives to move forward with a comprehensive development plan for the project. And some of those objectives were, we wanted to assure compatibility with the surrounding area, we wanted to promote orderly and appropriate residential development and growth, we wanted to maximize the continuity of the open space, and we wanted to sustain the integrity of the property's wetland resource. And early on, one of our objectives was to establish a type of a passive oriented park for the city property. This is known as, some planners would tell you, it's really an element of conservation planning principles, you know, conserving your open space, clustering, having compact One of our, utilizing some of these principles, one of our first development plans that you see on the screen did that, tried to attempt to do this on this plan. As you see down here where the open space is, these are, looking at the site as a whole, these are your most high pristine, I wouldn't call them pristine, but high quality wetland systems on the site. To the south of those wetland system is the City of Banell, and there's existing conservation easement that ties in really nicely with this system, so the whole system in itself, the integrity, you know, with the water, with the natural resources, and with the wildlife, it made a whole lot of sense that this connection would be made. Also initially, as you notice on this plan, you have an active, you know, basketball court, a little bit more of an active park in the middle being buffered by the wetland system with the development to the north. You have two means of ingress and egress here, ways in and out of the site, and they took away the units that were on East Hampton. We talked to, after we received this rendition, we knew through discussions that, you know, that the idea was to have more of a passive park, not so much of an active park, so we went to another rendition. In this one, you had a little bit of change. It went from 62 acres to, or 62 units to 60 units, and as you see on the map here, we just have a tot lot, an open field, a parking area, preservation of the wetlands areas with some nature trails. And also, as part of this plan, the developer was going to contribute $90,000 that would be allocated to making those park improvements. About June of last year, we had a large neighborhood meeting with the neighbors, and within that, I think it was in April last year, and we did a presentation for the citizens, for their neighborhood, and it was very clear at the meeting that they did not want a park at all. So at that meeting, we definitely agreed that within the development plan, within the settlement agreement, that we would eliminate the park. So this is our current plan for the neighborhood. 60 units, open space of city property, city boundary would be here, and the developer lots here, 60 units. Just want to get into a little bit of the highlights of some of the specifics of the development agreement and what's required. It's required for single-family residential, the minimum permanent lot size would be 6,600 square feet, the maximum number of lots cannot exceed 60. We added some language within the agreement regarding the perimeter buffer. Specifically, to the north of the property, there's some single-family residential homes to the north, and some single-family residential homes that abut this area to the west. What we required was a 25-foot buffer requirement, along with, there's an existing 35-foot drainage easement, so there is in essence a 60-foot buffer from the north on the Eric Drive side. On the western side, on Ebtide Drive, there was a 25-foot buffer that we required. In addition, there is a requirement that only one-story units can be built on that side of the property. We have received some calls, letters, and some concerns specifically about the lot Right now, the lot size, what this graph is actually depicting, if you see the red hashed areas, the 60 by 110 is the minimum, minimum lot size. We have approximately 21 out of the 60 units on the plan that are 7,000 square feet or larger. It's just, I know it's conceptual, but the minimum standard for the lot size would be 60 by 110. And also heard a lot of discussion regarding the size of the house, because of the lot size, that there would be, you know, really small houses, 1,200 square foot houses, not consistent or compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. One of our senior planners actually did a study, looked at five block areas around the neighborhood, and the average house size, living area was approximately 2,100 square feet. What this graphic is depicting is the proposed MPD for the lot size, which you see here with the 60-foot frontage, along with the setbacks, that you can have, build a total living area of over 2,500 square feet, and that's just one story, not including if they do go two stories. So I just wanted to illustrate the size of the lot doesn't necessarily depict that they may be small houses. I had previously mentioned in one of the renderings about the $90,000 that was going to be contributed to some of the park improvements. Well, since the park is now no longer part of the agreement and the area's open space of wetlands and uplands, the agreement stipulates that 90,000 will be utilized for the purpose of those improvements for the neighborhood, and those would include a sidewalk or a multipurpose trail, which is constructed to be 10-foot wide, it would extend from the southern corner of Eric Drive to Eagerit Trail, interacting with the, you know, expanding what's already there for the multipurpose trail. Also, construction of a right turn lane that would be on the intersection of Belter Parkway and East Hampton Boulevard, and a monument sign, replacing the existing Cypress Knoll Monument sign with one of our new prototype signs. This just depicts the off-site improvement of the 10-foot multi-use path from Eric Drive connecting to the multipurpose trail. This is just, depicts the off-site improvement of the right turn lane. Now, I do want to say there was discussion in the past about a right turn lane, and that proposal was for a full turn lane. This is a modified turn lane that our engineers went out and looked at. You may be able to have, you know, three or four cars that would stack, but would help. Doing the other, having this expand a little bit out further, you're going to get into some utilities that would probably cost a significant amount of money to move, so this is a modified approach. This is where the existing monument sign that is proposed to be replaced. Just to sum up, the settlement agreement and the commitment agreement, it's very consistent with what's in the master plan development. Again, facilitating a master plan development, there is a property exchange. The pre-land exchange, right now, the developer property is approximately 29 acres, the city property right now is approximately 14 acres. The developer will convey 22 acres of the 29 acres to the city, and the city will convey 14 acres to the developer, which would result in the post would be the developer property would go from 29 acres to 21 acres, the city property would go from 14 acres to 22, approximately 22 acres. The requirement to have the master plan development, and again, the residential density was maximized at 60 units, including the off-site improvements that I spoke about. The applicant's here, it's about the end of my presentation, we're here for comments or any questions. Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I could piggyback up, as a formality, there is also an agenda item under resolutions for the actual development agreement. Though the two proposals go together, we are suggesting you not take action on that resolution until the second reading of until the second reading of an ordinance, if you get to that point. But we wanted to put it on the agenda for full disclosure, so everybody knew exactly what the proposals were out there. But it really wouldn't be appropriate to take action on that item until, and if you get to the second reading of the ordinance. Just wanted to add that technicality to it.
Thank you. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. For the benefit of the audience, the procedure with an ordinance, you have the presentation, we will now have an opportunity for council members to ask questions. And that's questions, not comments, not discussion, not anything other than questions. At the end of the council question period, we will open the meeting to the public. Everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to speak. We'll ask you to approach the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes. After public comment, we will come back to city council to see if there are any additional questions or comments, and then possibility exists of a motion. So at this point, are there any council questions? Mr. McGuire?
Your honor, the $90,000 that the developer would contribute to the items that Mr. Tyner enumerated, if this development doesn't go forth for the next 15, 20 years, do these things not happen until that time? Or will the city put in the sidewalks and the right-turn lane and the new sign whether the development is taking place or not? What's the timing on spending of the $90,000?
Mr. McGuire, the $90,000 is triggered by preliminary plat. They have to pay that. If they don't come in for development in five or six years and we move forward with a multipurpose path, by the time they come in for preliminary plat, they will pay the $90,000 if it's built or not, and we will resupplement that 90,000 back to the city.
So do I understand you that somewhere between the passage of this ordinance and about five years, these changes may take place?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Ray, could you go back to the chart that where you had the mentions? Just where you talked about the 6,600 square feet, that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you stay there? All right, that's a minimum lot size, and we're talking about putting a house on a lot that is 60 by 110, having set, assigned setbacks of five feet. The standard lot in Palm Coast, that most standard lots are at least 10,000 square feet with seven and a half side setbacks. I don't know of you, but most of these people perhaps would remember the radio show with Goldberg's where Molly would come to the window and lean out the window, call her neighbor across from her and ask her for a cup of sugar. That's close. Whatever.
Just for the record, no, I don't remember that.
You're on the old, you can't lie. At any rate, I think when we look at putting a...
Mr. Lewis, is this a question?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Putting a house, and you say it's 25,000 square feet at least, is there any concern about safety and privacy and that sort of thing, given the fact that these houses are so close?
Well, you got to remember too, Mr. Lewis, yes, you're correct, that seven and a half is a setback for your standard SFR II and your SFR III homes. We've got to remember too, that the adjacent property will also have a five-foot setback as well. So, you know, that, you know, you'll have landscape and meet our landscape requirements as well, so.
All right.
So you'll have 10-foot instead of 15?
Right.
On the buffers, you have buffers on both sides, at least on two sides.
Yes.
One, you have a buffer of what, 25 feet? And what's the other one?
Yeah, we, there was a, on the north of the property, you have a 35-foot easement and a 25-foot buffer requirement. So on the north of the property, you're going to have 60-foot, 60 feet of a buffer. And then to the west side of the property, abutting to single-family homes, you'll have a 25-foot buffer.
In that, in that area, are the other buffers for other areas other than this area?
Back-to-back lots, there's no buffers. You have a building setback of about 10 feet. So you'll have lots that back up to each other from property line to property line. Now, we do have setbacks of 10 feet. And this development too would also have to, you know, comply with the setbacks as well. So along with the buffer, you also have the setback from the property line of where you actually build your house.
I guess I'm trying to understand, what is the purpose of the buffer?
The buffer was, when we worked on the plan, was to buffer from the residential property, to have some added buffer to the adjacent residence.
Do these people have leopards or something like that?
I'm sorry, sir?
Okay, I just understand the buffering, so I guess we'll get into it later.
Mr. Meeker?
Ray, who requested the 6,600-square-foot lot size? I mean, is it a result of our negotiation, or is the developer tied to that for some marketing reason?
You know, that, it was part of the negotiation.
Well, I'm wondering if the city and the developer were negotiating a land swap, in essence here. During that time, it seems to me that we had an opportunity to address size and density issues, and I'm wondering why the city didn't go for enough property to meet this new agreed-upon density, the 2.8 units per acre, I think, that was agreed to, and meet a more standard lot size for the city, you know, that's common throughout the city. What was the rationale behind that?
Well, the rationale was, first of all, when we were first planning and looking at the wetland areas, and the first part of the negotiation was for the park and for the passive park, to provide that upland area for those facilities. And then after the neighborhood meeting, you know, you accommodated the development on majority of the upland with some of the low-quality wetlands and save the natural resources. So that made a whole lot of sense from a planning perspective to cluster the units more on the upland portion. So that kind of evolved into those unit sizes. I'm sure there's a little bit of mix from the owner or the developer that, you know, maybe is from a marketing standpoint as well. But, you know, initially, we had the passive park and the preserve to the south with the development to the north.
Well, I'm going to throw this question out there, but I have a feeling it's probably more geared to the developer. I really need to know if everybody's totally married to 6,600 square feet, or, you know, if the availability of 10,000 square feet, or 9,500 square feet, or 9,900 square feet is available, you know, is that an option that's still on the table? So that's a question, but I'm not sure it's a question you can answer. I guess it's a question you can't answer, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I can, I can answer. Yeah, we are, you know, we are definitely open, absolutely, of going back and trying to work with the owner to look at some sort of other solution to increase that lot size.
That's it for me, Mayor.
Mr. Lorenzo, a question? Thank you. Ray, the, at the current plan, the number of trips that'll be generated, did that require the developer to add the right-turn lane?
No, sir, it did not.
So the contribution is developer contribution over and above what is required?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the number of units in the traffic is less than one at peak hour time. It is not an impact. It was something for the neighborhood, for contribution to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go back to your very original graph. And you said that under county zoning, there could have been 86 units, was that correct?
Three units to the acre, wasn't it?
Three units per acre, 86 units. Now, that's a theoretical maximum, I believe, but there's a lot of wetlands in there. How realistically, what could have been built there?
You know, theoretically, that is the maximum entitlements to the property. And, you know, you can build on wetlands. And these wetlands in this area on both the city property and the developer property is buildable, and you can build and impact those wetlands.
But unless I'm mistaken, to build on the wetlands would require some kind of mitigation, and mitigation typically is costly. So there's a cost-benefit, would seem to me, for the developer, whether or not the additional units would be feasible, given the cost of mitigation. Is that, is that correct?
Well, yes, there's typically some more costs for mitigation. Definitely got to go through the permitting process. You definitely have to go through and do your St. John's permitting, and do the appropriate mitigation of whatever that mitigation may be. And that factor is really determined on the quality of those wetlands and a lot of the technical data that's required for the permit. But yes, it'd be, it'd be more, potentially more money than on the uplands, as far as mitigation.
I think this is a question for the attorney. Under the county designation, there was an entitlement for 86 units, whether or not you'd actually get 86, something on that order of magnitude. The city rezoned Greenbelt with a maximum of 28 units. Obviously, the difference represents loss of revenue, potential loss of revenue to the developer. In the early part of this presentation, it was said that if we do not arrive at a negotiated settlement, there is the likelihood, the probability, the possibility of the developer proceeding with litigation. And if we lose in litigation, then it reverts to the county. We would then have to bring our zoning, the county zoning in accordance with the city zoning, and that's where we get the 12 units per acre maximum. Is this rezoning more in the form of a taking? And the reason I ask this question, would it, might this be considered a Burt Harris taking, and might the city be liable for monetary damages rather than a required rezoning? Understand the question?
I do. Really depends on which way the developer wants to go. Right now, we are in litigation. That's one thing I want to make clear to this council. This is a proposal for resolution, for settlement of that. There is a pending challenge before Department of Administrative Hearings, DOA, going all the way back to 2004. So if the decision of the city were not to approve this settlement, then it would be at the discretion of the developer, the property owner, to try to renegotiate a different settlement. Certainly, that's one option. Or if this settlement was not approved, then the developer could choose to go back and proceed with its challenge before DOA. And in such a situation, of course, you've got those potential consequences. Your worst day before DOA would be that the city's decision back in 2004 would not be upheld, and so it would be reversed, and you go back to the county designation, and Mr. Tyner has indicated to you what that would then engender. Now, having said that, Mr. Mayor, getting to your specific point, there is a possibility that the property owner could choose, rather than to go back to the existing litigation, could decide that the other course would be to proceed to seek compensation from the city for its diminution in its property values associated with the action in 2004, and that's called a Burt Harris claim.
And Mr. Tyner, has staff done any calculations on realistically what the magnitude of a Burt Harris claim might be? In other words, the 344 units, that's, that is the absolute, I'm going to use the word worst-case scenario. Realistically, I don't think you could get that under the best of circumstances. Have you done any calculations to what a Burt Harris claim might represent in terms of liability?
No, sir, we have none.
Refresh my memory, the most, a similar situation was Ryan's Landing. I remember at the time, there was discussion about smaller lot size, and the developer in that particular case tried to make the case that the quarter-acre lot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house is not the American dream anymore, that the market supports smaller homes, smaller lot sizes, less maintenance. What is, is Ryan's Landing a fait accompli? And if so, what is the lot size there?
I don't, I don't remember what the lot size is on Ryan Landing, but very similar concept, where, as you recall, you know, clustering, other development have some smaller lot sizes. And by clustering and getting those units, if you recall with the Ryan's Landing case, they donated exactly property to the city of Palm Coast for a future passive-type park, eco-type park for the future, very similar concept.
I want to go back to a question I think Mr. Lewis raised. The developer is, assuming this agreement is reached, there's a $90,000 contribution to the city. And you've said that money's going to be allocated to a sidewalk or a multipurpose path, a right-turn lane, and a monument. You can't begin to build those three things for $90,000. So the question that I'm asking, if this agreement is reached, the 90,000 is due when there's preliminary plat approval, that might be, might be immediately, it might be five years from now, it might be who knows when, depending on what the market does. In your opinion, if this agreement is reached, does the city plan, will staff recommend that we proceed at this point with those three improvements?
Mayor, I would like to take that question, because you're really talking about our capital improvement plan. All three of those were actually part of what we planned to build out there with tax dollars. And as has already been stated, the developer is not required to do these off-site improvements. This was just all part of negotiation to contribute to items that were already planned for the future. They don't have a date attached to them, but they are planned improvements that the city intends to do in the future, so.
They're in the capital improvement plan, but they're not budgeted?
Right. They're in the long-term plan, but they are, they do not have funding at this time.
So that none of these three improvements might happen?
Timing is, this whole project, the timing is in the future.
Well, I'm less concerned about what the developer's timing is. He or they will build when the market says it's time to build. I'm interested in these three projects. While they're on the capital improvement plan, they're not budgeted for, so we wouldn't see a new monument sign in 2012 or 13, we wouldn't see a bike path in 2013, potentially.
Potentially, yes.
Other council questions?
I have one more, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lewis?
If I can go back to the living area that we're talking about on this sized lot, and I know, well, where did it go? That chart again. That chart again. There it is. You have numbers in there that, to me, are kind of difficult to, to accept. You have the ideal living, so you have the total living area of twenty-five hundred square feet, total resident area thirty-three. That's an awful small lot for that size house. I just have a problem in terms of saying, okay, in my packet, we have, we have the living area, the minimum live area of twelve hundred square feet. And to me, that's really a hut, that's not a house. That wasn't a applause. I'm concerned about the fact that, I don't know what size house the developer's going to build on that size lot. I see those numbers, I see the numbers in my packet, and I also say, well, if he does the minimum-sized house, the guest room is the closet, you know? So you can't be talking about a three-bedroom house on that size lot. Sixty feet wide, how wide is the house? How long is the house? What's the length of the house? Those are questions that I can't answer in my head, because I live in my house, and I know how large my house is, and I'm on a ten thousand square foot lot. And.
There is a question here.
There is a question, is what is the size of the hot, the house that the developer plans to really build on that lot?
I don't have the answer for that question for the developer.
The maximum floor plan, if you've got a sixty-foot lot, and you've got ten-foot worth of side yard setback, ten from sixty, you could have a house fifty-foot, you could conceal a house fifty-foot wide. And if you've got a hundred and ten foot, take away thirty foot of front and rear yard setback, do the arithmetic, and what do you get? I mean, that's, that's the theoretical maximum the house could be. And I'm sure that's how you arrive at twenty-five hundred square feet. Okay. Any other council question? Mr. DeLorenzo.
Ray, what's the minimum living area in other single-family residential zoning?
All of our single-family residential, predominantly within the neighborhood is your SFR two and SFR three, and the minimum house size is twelve hundred square feet living area.
So it's the same as the?
Within the land development code.
Right.
Did you hear me?
All right, thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public who wish to be heard, again, please approach the podium, give us your name. Limit your contribution to three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and come here to counsel. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. And good evening. I have lived in Cypress Hill since 2003.
Your name, sir, please.
My name is John Caruso. I am co-chair of the Cypress Hill Committee. I've lived there since 2003. And this parcel of land has been my nemesis. I mean, gone, it's eight years now. And the, the, I don't know, I think it's Fort Knox down there. I mean, first, we're going to put a large park in. We vigorously opposed that. Then there were two other type features of parks, and we opposed that successfully. We had a meeting April thirteenth that Mr. Landon presided over regarding, it was to be walking trails. Majority of the people there at the meeting spoke on behalf of Cypress Hill, and we did not want a park at all. Mr. Landon said, if you don't want a park, he's not going to put one in. So that was very good. And then we also had a presentation by ICI. And those of us at the meeting understood, maybe erroneously, that the lots were going to be similar to what most of us had, ten thousand square feet. We did not oppose it at that time. We were happy that we were not going to have a park. We all left, our heads held high, feeling good. Mr. Landon understood us. We thought, here we go. Well, now, a couple of weeks ago, we had to go before the planning board. And the planning board, thank God, voted in our favor for it, too. And I think the primary reason was the lot size. That's what we've been talking about this evening. Now, I passed out some papers to some of the council members, and what our research shows, this is through Flagler County, is that there's a total of fourteen lots in Cypress Hill. That's based on fourteen lots that are, that are less than ten thousand square feet. That's based on two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven residential lots. So not only being a member of the committee, but being as a resident, I start wondering, what's going to happen to my land value? And everybody else, we're very concerned about this. And we're, we really need your help, because we feel our land values are going to go down. And, and really, when I was very irate tonight, when I heard that some of the properties are going to be two stories, well, no wonder. Why don't they be four or five stories? Because they're, they're very small parcels of land. I also like to.
Fifteen seconds, please.
I'd also like to get a larger buffer for the people of around that type. I find twenty-five feet is not enough. But I hope that you all understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Janice Farson. I spoke at the planning meeting also. I've lived in Cypress Hill since 1999. I feel like, when I look at that picture, the best thing I can see about that picture is whoever lives there doesn't need a lawnmower, that's for sure, because there's no yard. The other thing is, is this considered zero-lot-line building? I don't know, because I have lived in a place that was zero-lot-line, but we were allowed to build up in large townhouses, so it didn't really matter, it was a gated community. But this, I can understand Mr. Lewis's concern about safety, and Mrs. Goldberg lighting a match in her house, and the next-door house catching on fire. And then the other thing I worry about is East Hampton, the traffic. At the other meeting, they, they mentioned the number of, at least three hundred extra vehicles on East Hampton every day. And I, I think that that is unacceptable, as far as I am concerned. The other thing is, you cannot, if I bought a house in Cypress Hill when I came, I happened to buy a house that was, had never been lived in, but was being turned over by the builder, it was a specked house. But I had the opportunity, I could have bought the lot next door to me and had two lots. If I hadn't bought that house, I could have bought two lots and put my house cloped in the middle of the two lots. Now, in this plan, I don't see where anybody can come in and say, I want lot twenty-three and twenty-four, and I want my house in the middle. The builder is going to build a house on lot twenty-three and a house on lot twenty-four, and there's not going to be an option even to get your own builder if he develops this area. So there are a couple of questions there that I don't understand. And the East Hampton part, I think I speak for most of the people in Cypress Hill. We do not want to see East Hampton become another international speedway drop. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been told to speak into the mic so everybody can hear me.
Please.
Yeah, my wife. My name is Wayne Dunforth. I spoke at the planning board meeting. I would like to begin by thanking each and every one of the planning board members who voted to reject the ICI building plan on January eighteenth. I found it remarkable that the members who rejected the ICI proposal stated in detail their underlying reasons for their decision. But astonishingly, those who supported the ICI proposal divulged little or nothing about their rationale for supporting the ICI plan. And finally, when Mr. Duffy gave his reasons for rejecting the plan and inferred that his decision might cost him his position, I was uplifted by his honesty and courage, but troubled about the implication that his job security might be on the line. Mr. Duffy's response suggested that he, and possibly other planning board members, were under pressure, apparently by government officials, to support the ICI proposal. This is unsettling to the Cypress Hill community, because it leaves doubt about the motives and criteria that will be used in rendering a final decision in this case. ICI would like to make the largest profit it can in a parcel of land within the Cypress Hill community. But if the city had required ICI to operate within the same standards that currently exist within the community, this conflict might never have come about. So now, ICI wants to build on smaller lots to make a larger profit, while, while we are expected to be sacrificial lambs in this arrangement. The fact is, ICI is likely to make a sizable profit while devaluing our property. As objectionable as this is, we do not expect our government officials to be complicit in creating such an outcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Herb Sees.
I moved here in 2004, and the last sizes I thought were uniform. I wasn't aware that somebody from the outside could come in and say, no, they're not uniform. I thought the city had a standard code that was ninety by one-sixty, not triadicord sizes of these lots. We can't afford triadicord center city. We have many outskirts, we don't need them in the middle of the city. And a study did on cars, one per hour, come out, sixty ounces, one car per hour. There's no study. His studies, he can't back up. He can't back up. You gentlemen asked how many questions, he couldn't answer any of them. Please don't sell us down the drain.
My name is Carolyn Weldon. I have been in Cypress Hill. My husband and I had our home built in 1992 and moved in March 1993. We have continuously had problems, beginning years ago, with an amphitheater proposed nearby with its traffic, and then we're moving closer to home with this proposed development. I am very impressed with what Mr. Nett's has stated, and I have my question about, with the twenty-nine acres they had originally, with the amount of wetlands, I don't know, mitigation of wetlands is not as much in favor as it has been. And I don't really foresee them trying to take twenty-nine acres and shove eighty-nine houses on it, with all the costs those wetlands would entail. And I think that the, the idea of twelve units per acre, I would like to know where in this county there is anything that is twelve units per acre. Maybe a motel? And certainly, that's not what I'd like to see there. But I, I really feel, I used to, when I first came to Cypress Hill, I was the Cypress Hill treasurer and social chairperson, and did work delivering, hand-delivering all of our newsletters. And I bicycled and walked through all of Cypress Hill. And nothing remotely resembling this is anywhere in Cypress Hill, and I know that for a fact. And even the few houses that are on lots that are somewhat smaller than ten thousand, there are also a multitude of lots that are sixteen and seventeen thousand square feet, cul-de-sac lots, corner lots, lots on the insides of circles, and I can name the number of those that are among those for my neighbors on. So for fourteen extremes and well over two thousand, to compare that with this and all of them, larger than this, even when you consider the so-called townhouses are two connected units on a ten thousand square foot lot, very similar, except perhaps better looking than the replants. I just can't really feature this down there in the East Hampton. It's just unacceptable and unrealistic.
My name is Dan Bozza, B-O-Z-Z-A. I live at 153 Eric Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. Lewis. I think that both of you brought up some very important questions that I was going to bring up myself, if you hadn't preempted me, in regard to some of the questions you were asking, are the kinds of questions that everybody in this room has. I have felt for a long time that people understand things better if you talk in pictures. So I'd like to paint a couple of pictures for you and for the people that are here. Five-foot side yard setbacks means the space between the house next door and my house is about the size of a single, single-car driveway. That's how narrow that is. So picture yourself trying to park your car carefully in a one-car garage. That's about the space you have between these two houses. Secondly, I don't know a lot about all of this technical stuff about building, but I do know a few things. Number one, you have to get a soil test in order to get a permit to build a home. What kind of a soil test do you get on wetlands resources, which, of course, we all used to call a swamp? Okay? So what kind of soil test do you get in a swamp? You also have to get a PERC test. Can you even get a PERC test when the property you're testing is underwater, under a swamp? Those are two items that I think are glossed over in this process. The other thing is, we are inundated with a lot of fluff. The fact that the planning meeting, I felt there was being stoned to death with popcorn. It was all beautiful stuff, beautiful pictures. They know how to talk in pictures. What they fail to tell you is, they'll give you, the property to the south is twice as big as the property to the north. It doesn't matter. The prop, what's the value? The property to the south is a wetland resource, swamp. The property to the north is buildable tomorrow. That makes it far more valuable than the property to the south. If it is that much more valuable, and we make this deal, the builder goes home tonight thinking he won the lottery. He won the jackpot, because we are not requiring, even if we want to go ahead with this plan, we are not requiring a sufficient enough payment to make the exchange equal.
Fifteen seconds.
Furthermore, the last point is that if we continue the negotiation, one of the non-negotiable points is the zoning must conform to the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sally Blonder. I've lived in Cypress Hill since 2002. In our view, this settlement greatly benefits the developer and hers neighborhood. You've already been given the fact that there are two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven residential lots in Cypress Hill. An additional fact is that only five of those lots are less than ninety-nine hundred-plus square feet. And that comes from the Flagler County Property Appraisers Office. You talk about compatibility with the surrounding area. We do not consider those size lots and smaller houses to be compatible. Whether our houses are two thousand square feet or twenty-eight hundred square feet, we value the open feeling that our neighborhood affords us because of our larger lots. You talk about sustaining the integrity of the property's wetland resources, but you are sacrificing the integrity of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a five-year resident of Cypress Hill.
I'm a five-year resident of Cypress Knolls. First of all, can someone please tell me what wetland laws we abide by? Is it federal, state, local, Palm Coast's very own wet laws? Who is it? Can somebody tell me, please?
We'll get answers to your questions after the public comment.
Okay, and, okay. On these homes, are these homes going to be wood-framed? Are they going to be reinforced concrete construction? Are they wooden-framed? If they're wooden-framed, that's awful. That's a fire hazard. And when it comes to fires in Cypress Knolls, the golf course actually acts as a buffer or a fire, actual fire lane for fires automatically. But if these homes are wooden and they're only 10 feet apart, that's the worst problem with fires than we have with the pine trees. And let me see, a lot of the questions were asked, so I have to take a look here. The, I think the biggest thing is, all of us here, most of us here are retirees, and most of us have lost a minimum of $125,000 on our property values if they bought within the last seven to eight years. And that's pretty much fact. And by building these little homes, I would suggest that ICI gate their little low-income community, put two entrances on Route 100, and let them take care of the entrances and let them gate. We'll buy the fence. Let them gate in. If they want to build low-income, make it a low-income gated community. Leave Cypress Knolls alone. We do not want East Hampton opened up. Number one, that is a big thing that most of us don't want. Number one, and number two, the criminal activity in that town, once they open that up, they end up, there is very little crime. The police department is seldom ever in Cypress Knolls. There's a lot of upper-middle-income people, they've got a lot of wealthy things, a lot of wealthy valuables in their homes. They open that up, we're going to see police cars every 20 minutes up the street. We don't want it, that's the only thing I really want anybody to know. We don't want it, and that's all there is to it. And let them gate their little community if they want to build these substandard homes. Thank you.
Me, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Phil Farino. I've lived in Cypress Knolls, had a home for eight years. I liked it so much, I bought a second home in Cypress Knoll. And the only reason I'm buying Cypress Knolls is because I like all the things I'm hearing everybody saying here, and starting with what Mr. Russo added before. He's been there as long as I have, it was around a corner from me. We want it to stay the way it is. We don't want the size to be changed. And what I've heard it sounds like is that the sound of the size of the property, or the size of the homes, regardless, the size of the property is the key. If the house is big, it's going to be that much closer to the people and all these other things they're echoing. I kind of agree with, we want to leave the area to look as it is. If I wanted to move to an area where there was homes on top of each other or that extra thing, I would go more where the areas have more duplexes. That's why I didn't move where more of the duplexes were. So with that said, I just hope that this doesn't go through. I had the issue once before of my first home, which is backed by a golf course, and I had issues with going to meetings about that, where I was never told that that land was technically not reserved. I was told nothing will ever be built there. That was told to me by the real estate. And I know, and everybody in this room has probably heard, oh, this is reserved and reserved. But it's really reserved, quote-unquote, and other things. I think it has to do a lot with, like, why do we move around the golf course that gives us these buffers and these nice trees and not having things on top of each other? And that turn lane, I'm not sure if it was you, Mr. Mayor, if you're saying it cost more than $90,000. We haven't had it this long. That shouldn't be the biggest thing about the $90,000. I think it's the issue of putting a different kind of a complex within an established area that is already set in its own way. And I thank you all.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lucy Davis. We moved to Palm Coast 13 years ago, and we chose to build in Cypress Knoll because of the upper range of the value of the homes that were constructed there. It is my opinion that houses currently built there will become devalued with the extreme density of smaller homes. I request that the council denies the rezoning of this property in Cypress Knoll. In terms of lot sizes, my question is, do they ever consider having comparable lot sizes for this property as well? In addition, we may need that land in the future to build an elementary school. I've been on every street in Cypress Knoll, and I've seen only two houses that may have been less than 1,800 square feet. Now, you mentioned there's a trend of downsizes. Okay, from where we came from, we've already downsized, and we don't need smaller houses in our neighborhood.
Thank you very much for hearing us at City Council, Mr. Mayor.
Your name, please.
Oh, excuse me. My name is Maureen Christopher. In 1998, we moved to Cypress Knoll. And at that time, and for a couple of years, there was a sale sign on those lots. And the sale sign said, "Single-family residential lots," or parcels. And I'd like to know how and why, between '98 and 2004, as we heard tonight, did they change to multifamily zoning? Why did that happen? Because this property is right in the middle of a single-family residential development. So it didn't make sense. So that's my first question, actually, why and how? Do we have proof of this? That it used to be multifamily? Because that would remove a great threat. Because on April 13th of 2011, we were threatened that if we didn't accept the plan that is presented, something worse would happen to us. So I want to know for sure. Was there ever a change? And my next item is altogether different, and it concerns what's called in the industry, I've heard from my environmental son. Clearcutting. Now, the economy is very bad, and clearcutting means when a developer comes in and just takes down all of the natural habitat. This would be sad, because it would be sad for the folks who have to drive past it every day like I do, because I live at the very end. And it would be a sad thing for Palm Coast, because we try to be green. We had this happen to us at the town center. It was sad. When my environmentalist son came here and saw what was done at the town center, he was devastated. And that's what we have to be careful about, is there are ordinance and traits in our city that would say that a developer cannot come in and clear-cut, because then we would be having a barren desert at the end of East Hampton. Where right now, as my Irish ancestors would say, we have a little bit of heaven that fell from out the sky one day.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Chapman. I'm probably the baby of the neighborhood. I've only been here for two years. But at the last meeting, I heard that the city gave up 14 acres of good land for bad land, but I didn't hear that at today's meeting. I heard that we got 29 versus 14, and you got 22 versus 21. But I didn't hear the fact that we gave up good land for bad land. I don't see that as a good thing for Palm Coast or for Cypress Knolls. Nobody here that I heard tonight is complaining about building homes there. They're complaining about the size of the lot that's being put there. Mr. Mayor, you put very clearly, you could not build as many homes as he wants us to believe in that land. Between putting the roads in, between the environmental that you would have to keep up, between the bills you would have to do, he would never get near 300 houses. But we're being given a good bill of goods here.
You, Mr. Lewis. I grew up in an 800-square-foot home, apartment house, for 21 years. Most of us worked very hard to get into this community and buy into this community. We spent a lot of our years, like the gentleman before said, we retired to this community. Now you want to make this community like Queens, New York. Why? You know, Queens, New York, the gentleman before again said, it's the width of a driveway. Queens, New York, you have a driveway. I could likely spit next door and hit somebody by accident. So we're not complaining about building, because you can't change progress. It's going to happen. But you don't have to live with what the lawyers have negotiated with these people. That's basically what I have to say. Thank you.
Richard Falwell, Palm Coast. I don't live in Cypress Knoll, but I'll say one thing. When we were getting ready to move down here looking for homes, we stopped in St. Augustine, and we looked at homes. And what I'm looking at right here is called a patio home, where you stick your arms out and you're in the neighbor's windows next door. That was too small. You feel like you're living in a tunnel. Not only that, it's setting bad precedence for future building in the city. If you start cutting down the lot sizes down to what they want to do, they're going to start coming back to you and saying, hey, we've already done it once, we can do it twice. That's wrong. 80 by 125 is where it needs to stay. And another thing is, follow the money, gentlemen. Who's getting what where with this patio with ICI? They pay off people all the time. We don't need any more of this stuff going on around in a community over here. So the basic thing is patio homes, no, wrong. I moved down here because there's a lot size here. We upsized from what we raised our kids in. And the kids wanted to know why. He says, "We deserve it, and that's the way we're going to do it." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rutz, and I have lived in Palm Coast for eight years and six years in Cypress Knolls. When we bought our house, and I also own a lot besides the home, when we went to the town hall and we bought this house, which is our second in town, they said it was yucky wetlands, and nothing was going to build behind it. I live on the north side. You have a buffer, what I would call canal, or whatever you want to call it, because it does have constant water running through it. And then you're going to give another 25 feet. When I look out my backyard right now, I have deer, I have turkeys, I have an eagle that lands on our back tree maybe once a month, all right? And that's all going to be gone. And I think that's the saddest part out of all of this. We can be a beautiful city and still have a lot of green space. And now, big cities are growing, and they're putting all green things on the roofs of the house to bring oxygen back to the people down below. And I just can't understand why we can't have both in this town. We've won great awards for the town center, for the birds, for how it was built. And even when the stores, hopefully, will eventually come in, it's going to be a beautiful place. We're going to be, we are an environmentally beautiful city. Our trails, any town, any city, any state, any country could never come near what we have here. And to see us have to take that down, not to mention what a buffer it is from what we all know is a great entry to the city on Route 100 and to the beach. And that buffer keeps the sound down, where we don't have to build a million-dollar wall like they do up in New Jersey where I come from, to stop the noise from coming over from a very busy road, which is going to increase as the years come and the building goes up. So I really, really hope that if they do put them up, there'll be homes that are few and far between. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. My name is Carol Gunthorpe. I'm the co-chair of the Cypress Knoll Community Association. I think the residents have pretty much let you know exactly how they feel. We have great concerns about how the swap came to be. I really don't know much about building, but I do know that I wouldn't want to live on swampland, so much to ICI's credit, they have done something to get themselves out of that position. Having said that, I'd like to reaffirm that none of us are really questioning ICI's ability to build. They do have the right to develop their land. What we're asking for is that it be compatible with the existing neighborhood, which these plans do not reflect. And therefore, I think the whole thing needs to be revisited and perhaps a new plan drawn up. One perhaps even where the city, which has property, perhaps they can negotiate some of their existing property and give that to ICI, sell it to ICI, whatever. But that would enable ICI to make the lots bigger, which in turn would make it compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
My name is Victor Chavas, C-H-A-V-S. I live in Palm Coast. I've been in Cypress for the past 10 years. Well, something, I bought a few lots in 2002. I didn't know anybody in Palm Coast. I went to telephone book, and I grabbed a real estate. You show them all the lots in Palm Coast, includes in Cypress. I didn't see one lot smaller than 10,000 square feet. Out of 80, I bought 13. All those lots are 10,000 square feet. I don't know why you want to put an upscale Cypress, smaller lots. I just bought a lot a couple of months ago in 10 Egan, or 9 Egans across from me. It's 10,000 square feet. I intend to put a house, minimum 2,800 square feet. Why ICI, we once bought a 6,000-square-feet or 7,000-square-feet lots in our neighborhood. I own a few houses. Out of those few, three is built by ICI. Guess what? I must be the lucky one. All the lots are 10,000 square feet. Why we need smaller lots? We need bigger lots. We thought ICI, instead of built 28 lots or 28 houses, built 10, and put it on the market for $5 million. That's a good thing. Now, poor house for $150,000, $120,000 homes, that will not go. We don't like them, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. But first, I want to thank everybody for their patience and their politeness. I did hear some specific questions. One of the questions, Mr. Tyner, wetland laws. What wetland laws do we abide by?
There's a variety of different agencies. The St. John's River Water Management District is a state agency that regulates impacts to wetlands. The Army Corps of Engineers is a federal agency that also regulate the impacts to wetlands.
By the way, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Maker.
One of the important things about that is, under the state law, not only does the Water Management District preempt the city from setting a wetland line, I mean, a wetland line set by the state, they've reserved unto themselves the ability to delineate wetland lines or wetlands themselves. And further, they are the expert when it comes to mitigation. If mitigation is approved at the Water Management District, the city has to buy into that mitigation concept.
Second question I had, I don't know if we have anything from the developer, but the nature of the construction. Are they considering frame, block?
Are they considering frame, block? Do we know?
Don't know, sir.
Okay. Question about clearcutting. Could you tell what the city's ordinances are with relationship to existing vegetation, so-called clearcutting, so on and so forth?
Sure. Land Development Code has regulations regulating clearcutting. Typically, you would receive a plat or a site plan. You try to avoid the impacts as much as possible. The example was town center. In some situations, like in town center, yes, they had to bring some soil above the one-foot elevation of the road base for floodplain purposes and for stormwater management purposes. But as is doing that, you may recall that they also designed that system to enhance the wetland systems that they preserve all throughout town center as well. So in the long run, from an environmental standpoint, bringing that floodplain level up and also enhancing the wetlands that were on site.
Okay. Another question that I heard, although I think you addressed it perhaps one more time, how, why the zoning change?
Well, again, the comp plan change was done in 2004 when we became, when we adopted our first comprehensive plan. And we designated the comp plan designation a green belt, which entitled for one year per acre.
Could you, in 25 words or less?
Yes.
Guessimate what the intent of the city was with the creation of a green belt designation? What were you trying to accomplish?
At that point, Mayor, I do not know what the intent of the green belt designation was for that specific piece of property. I can make some assumptions that part of that property was city park site, so that made sense to have a green belt designation at that time on the city portion of the property. But I do not know as far as the residential portion of the property.
Okay, so for the benefit of the individual asked the question, walk us through the zoning change again from the original county, perhaps if you go back to that graph.
Yeah, sure. Previously, before we became a city, the county designation on that property was residential low density, which permitted three units per acre for that land. When the city designated the property as green belt, that limited, reduced the entitlements that they had through the county designation from three units to one unit per acre. So thus the challenge. And then the compromise that we have before us today for the master plan development and within the settlement agreement, the current proposal is for total of a maximum of 2.8 units per acre, which is clearly less than what the previous county designation is, but more than what the existing city designation is. And most likely, Mayor, in a real case scenario, significantly less than what could possibly be on the site if we lose a challenge.
The 86 units under the original county designation would have been distributed over how many acres?
Roughly 29 acres.
And the 60 units under the proposal, over how many acres?
21 acres. Because the existing proposal has the land swap. So they have less property.
So the 60 units, even though it's 2.8 units per acre, you're talking less acres than?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the, I think it's the total acres within the parcel and it doesn't take into account stormwater.
Correct.
Okay. Which brings us to the last question I heard, the land swap. Would you go over that again, please?
Sure.
What the city, what the proposed negotiated settlement is and why?
Sure. The original proposal for, the original lot size was about 29 acres, and the city site was approximately 14 acres. The net, after the land swap, the developer will be reduced from 29 to 21, and the city will increase from 14 to 22 acres. And as I illustrated when we were doing the master plan development, as far as good land, bad versus bad land, we actually think it's good land for good land. We looked at it again from an environmental standpoint, from a holistic planning perspective. As I illustrated before, you have your higher-quality wetlands to the south that were connected to a conservation easement in Benel that ties that system together, you know, for the wildlife and the species that could be there. So if you were going to do development, yes, I think the good land for development would be in the upland area and preserve those wetland quality areas and maybe even possibly enhance those. So that was the reason.
I think those are the primary questions were asked. So, back to city council, additional questions, comments, a motion?
Your Honor, it seems to me that the overwhelming vibration, if you will, from this community is that this development, whoever develops it, needs to look like everything else in that neighborhood. And I think that the...
I will ask, we listen very politely to you, please give us the same courtesy.
And I would say that we need to take yet another trip to the drawing board with this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am not in favor of this current offering.
You're on.
I'm on. I'm not in favor of the current offering as it stands at the moment. I think the lot sizes are too small. Number one, I think you need to maintain the character of a neighborhood. And once you change that character of a neighborhood, it changes everything else in that neighborhood, including the possible resale value of the existing homes. I think, I don't know what size house the developer's going to build, but I do know that on that lot, I'm really concerned as to whether or not that house will be comparable to other houses in the area. I think that we need to reconsider this as it stands.
Mr. Maker. Mr. Mayor, first off, I really appreciate everybody's comments and quite honestly, the civility that you raised them. I'm impressed. Mr. Mayor, one person that I'd like to ask a question to is the developer, is there a developer's representative here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, this is not, you know, we went through questions earlier, and this is our place for comments and to make a motion, but would I be allowed to ask the developer a question?
Certainly. That's always a possibility as part of any such proceeding. The developer's welcome to make a presentation. Welcome, Mr. Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I appreciate the opportunity. I was hoping I'd get a chance to speak. Generally, we get to speak when this happens, so this has been a lot of fun. I've enjoyed it very much, so. First thing I want to say is that we, David Haas for your record with ICI Homes, we have negotiated in good faith every step of the way, multiple times, with numerous staff members, your current staff, your former staff, and we have negotiated in good faith every step of the way. I would like to take just a second to talk about the $90,000, because I think that's important, that you understand where $90,000 came from. When I initially sat down with Dick Kelton, when he was the city manager, we talked about, he talked about the desire and the need for a park on that property. He asked that we contribute something to the construction of that park. We felt since it was going to be in property that we were going to develop and where we were going to build homes, that it's in our best interest and typical for ICI to contribute to the construction of park and the amenities that are pertinent to that. So we were very quick to offer $90,000, which at that time happened to be the value of a lot. And as you heard some of the people say, that's not the value of the lots today. But as, when we met with the citizens, April the 13th at the African American Cultural Society, it became abundantly clear that no one wanted a park. In subsequent negotiations with the staff, it was determined that, I mean, at that point, I thought 90,000 was off the table. We're not going to build a park, it's not going to help us sell houses, so the 90,000 would probably go away. As we came to realize very quickly through negotiations with staff, they had other intentions for the 90,000, and we ultimately agreed, let's reallocate the 90,000 to something else. It's outside of our community directly, it's off of our property, but, you know, the case was made that it would benefit, and so we agreed to that. So that, we didn't agree to build a monument sign or a sidewalk, or we agreed to make a $90,000 contribution for park. As far as the cut through to Benel, the extension of East Hampton all the way to 100, which continually comes up, we don't have the ability to do that. I don't think anyone does, but we have no intention of doing that and don't support it and don't think it's a good idea. So I think that's off the table. The other thing I want to say is, you know, we're ICI Homes. We do not build low-income housing, anywhere, ever. We never have, and we're not going to here. The first time anyone objected to the size of the lots, now remember, six years of meetings, multiple, I can't even tell you how many meetings, the first time I heard there was an objection to 60-foot lots was at 4:30 before the planning board hearing. I had not heard an objection to a 60-foot lot prior to that. We're willing to look at that again. When we met, when we met with the group at the church, the plan that we showed was exactly the plan your staff showed you tonight, which was 60 by 110-foot lots. We're willing to take another look at that. If that's a problem, you know, I got upset when they built on the lot next door to me. I've lived in Flagler County for 30 years, and when they built next door to me, I wasn't real happy about that. And if, we're not looking to come into Cypress Knoll or to continue to build in Palm Coast and Flagler County and upset everybody in the community, upset everyone in Cypress Knoll. We own hundreds of lots throughout Flagler County, hundreds of lots in Palm Coast. It's going to be many, many, many years before this is going to be developed. We can buy lots every day for $8,000 to $12,000 all over Flagler County and in other places as well, and we can build on those lots. It would be probably $25,000 to $30,000 a lot to develop these lots. I mean, the pure economics is this isn't going to happen anytime soon. We had sort of allowed the settlement discussions to languish. We weren't moving very quickly and earnestly. I don't think the city was either. The Division of Administrative Hearings encouraged that we need to get this settled, and that's the reason why everything got stepped up a little bit faster. I'm happy to sit down with the staff and take another look at the layout. I don't want to sit here and negotiate against myself relative to lot sizes or any of that stuff. And I'll tell you, and I think Mr. Lannon and Mr. Tyner will bear this out, there hasn't been a meeting yet that we haven't walked away with one less thing than we had when we went into it. So I know if we sit down again, I'm going to lose something else on the deal. And I'm okay with doing that, just for peace and harmony and to continue to have a, ICI enjoys a great reputation in Flagler County, and we're very protective of that reputation, and we want to make sure that it is maintained. For those of you, the first time I came to Flagler was in 1967, and as I said, I've lived here for 30 years. Mr. Maker, Councilman Maker will bear this out, and he probably has the maps to show some of the residents who live in Palm Coast and in Cypress Knoll, you very well may live in what was once a wetland, because a lot of Palm Coast was wetlands back in 1967 when I first came here. So I'd be careful about being too critical of wetlands and constructions in wetlands because it does happen. But at the same time, I'll answer any of your questions. What kind of houses do we build in this area? We build block, it's all block construction. Five-foot side setbacks are very common and very standard. If that's not what is wanted, then we can take a look at, again, I'm not here to negotiate against myself on the, from the dais or from the podium, but I'll sit down with your staff and we'll bring something back, maybe that's a little bit different. But I would ask that we do a little give and take in the negotiation and that it not all be just take. We, again, for six solid years, we negotiated in good faith at every turn. So I would ask the same thing. I'll answer any of your questions.
I'm going to offer a suggestion to council, based on Mr. Haas's willingness to go back to the table. I would going to suggest that we continue this item, allow the developer and staff to discuss it. We've heard, I took reasonably careful notes, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11 speakers directly expressed concerns about lot size. It seems to me that there may be some flexibility here. The concept of a buffer zone, buffering a residential community from a residential community is unusual. Perhaps there's something we can do. So I'm going to suggest, unless council has anything else that they'd like to offer in the way of a motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask my question.
Mr. Maker, go right ahead.
Well, the reason I wanted to bring you up here is to get to exactly what the mayor was getting at. I ran some quick calculations myself here of 6,600 square-foot lots times 60 units, and I came up with 396,000 square feet total for that amount of land. And then I did another calculation, if the lots were 10,000 square feet, which is kind of like what the citizens are looking for, times 60 units, that's 600,000 square feet that I need total. I subtracted the two and came out with a difference, divided by my favorite, 43,560 square feet to the acre, and came up with a rough guess at what that says that if you had an additional five acres of land, you'd be able to go 10,000 square feet to the acre, roughly. If you were able to negotiate some kind of an agreement like that where the city gave up an additional five acres of land, is that something that you guys would be willing to accept?
Let me look at the details. It sounds, in concept, that sounds workable, and, you know, I'd need to do the math. I don't know what the lot count would end up being with that.
60 units. It was the same 60, but it was on 10,000 square feet as opposed to 6,600.
Mr. Maker, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. I think you have to be very careful about giving away city assets.
We just did. Did a land swap on this earlier. But...
I'm happy to sit down with the staff and continue the discussions, and I think as long as we do it in a spirit of give and take, I think we can make this work. I do want to say, and I think that I'd be remiss if I didn't say, that we're not going to just walk away from this. I mean, we're going to do whatever we need to do to protect our rights. And that's not a threat in any way. We, for six years, have negotiated, want to continue, and would like to come to a resolution, but ask you the suggestion that maybe the developer would just say, oh, never mind, we're not going to do that. We have spent on attorneys and on planners and on engineers to do all of these myriad plans, tens of thousands of dollars at this point.
I've looked at a lot of these things and I've watched the court cases over the last 20 years on changing the density from one to another, and I know how those things end up, especially in situations like this. The other thing I'd like the staff to negotiate a little bit on would be wetland enhancement areas. I looked at the aerial photo there, what I saw was two Cypress Systems, one on the southwest corner of the city's property, one on the southeast corner of the city's property. And maybe in some reconfiguring, that we might be able to do some enhancement to those areas. It's well away from the residents and all that kind of stuff, so it's just a thought. And by the way, I agree with everybody. I don't want to see a cut through in East Hampton. I know that Cypress area pretty well, Cypress Knoll area pretty well. I was there after the fires in, what was it, 1985? And permitted the Cypress Knoll golf course, walked all over it with Gary Player in the old days. So I know your area very well. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest if somebody would care...
I'll make a motion that this be laid off to the side to allow more negotiation to occur.
Do you want to table it, or do you want to defer to time certain? Mr. Attorney, give me some guidance.
Is there a preference one way or the other?
Just a couple factors. I certainly cannot, I certainly cannot speak for staff and what kind of timeframe that they might need to sit down and talk about everything that they've heard this evening. I also want to make sure the council's aware that, and Mr. Haas was correct, one of the reasons this has come back... that, and, and Mr. Haas was correct, one of the reasons this has come back before you is because the state of Florida has told the parties to get together and work this out, or the state of Florida is going to force a hearing. And so, that's one of the reasons. And I don't know exactly whether there was a timeframe for that. Now, whether you just table it or can...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. There is a timeframe, and we at this point have sixty more days.
Well, I think, I think I can represent the consensus of council. Mr. Landon, you will make staff available as necessary to discuss this again.
Yep, absolutely. I, I would suggest that, Ray, would it be easier to set a time certain right now, so the audience knows when this will come back?
Yeah, probably would be.
Okay, I'm going to tell you, two weeks is, is going to be too quick. Or do you think we can do it in two weeks? Or should we do it?
Don't artificially limit yourself. If, if, if sixty days is our outside, I'd rather take thirty days and, and get a good product.
Let's, and then we can do another night meeting, too, which obviously is probably best for the, for the community. So, if we could set the, continue this, take a formal motion for the March sixth meeting at six-thirty PM, same location. And David, if you're available at that time.
And Mr. Landon will also...
If that's the case, and he's in agreement, I'll make the motion. We, motion that we move this to the March sixth meeting.
Six PM at this location.
Well, six percent, six-thirty or soon thereafter is, you know, we do have, usually have some intervening things. Okay, moved and seconded, roll call, roll call vote on this one, please.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Meeker?
Yes.
Mayor Nance?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed, five to zero.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your patience and your cooperation. You get to go home, we get to stay around a little bit longer.
Thanks, I'm going down.
Agenda item number five, an ordinance relating to the rezoning of some six thousand acres Neoga Lakes DRI. Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in sections two point oh five and two point oh six of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for a project known as Neoga Lakes DRI as described in Exhibit A. It contains six thousand three hundred and seventy-eight, more or less, acres from, from agriculture, which is Flagler County designation, to master plan development zoning district, or MPD. Provides for conflicts, providing for severability, and provides for an effective date. And as before, Mr. Mayor, this is also quasi-judicial.
It's quasi-judicial. Does anyone have any ex parte communications that they need to disclose?
None.
No.
Hearing none. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this looks like deja vu, because it wasn't that long ago. We went through many public hearings on this. This is a land use process for Florida where, in this case, because of the size of, of the area, we had a development of regional impact process, which is kind of a statewide land use approval. Then we also had to adopt our comprehensive plan for this area. Both of those have already been accomplished. And then the last approval that's necessary for a development is the actual zoning, and that is what this is tonight. So, it's going to look very, very similar to what you've already seen, but Jose is going to do the presentation one more time. So, Jose, take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, Jose Papa, Senior Planner of the Community Development Department. The application we have before us is essentially the rezoning application for the Neoga Lakes development of regional impact. Just as a, a lot of, I want to preface that my, my presentation will be a lot of review and a lot of background, and again, just to, just to reiterate that this project has been through numerous public meetings and public hearings, and has been vetted through the public review process, and essentially what, and, and essentially that has really assisted in, in the analysis of this particular rezoning request. The subject property is about sixty-three hundred acres, located in a large annexation area west of US one, and for other reference, it's even west of the railroad tracks, and north of this is Espinola, so it's north of, north of the little enclave of Espinola. So, this is again, sixty-three hundred acres, and the request here, again, is to change the current zoning of the property, which is currently agriculture, Flagler County designation, to master plan development, which would be consistent with the future land use map designation of the property, which is the development of regional impact, or DRI mixed use. Again, the background is that this project has been through numerous public review, various agencies have put their two cents, that were ten cents worth into the review of this particular project. I have up here the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, which of course used to be the State Land Planning Agency, which was under the Department of Community Affairs, DOT, Department of Transportation, Department of Environmental Protection, the Northeast Florida Regional Council, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Game Commission, the Water Management District, the Division of Historical Resources, and on a more local level, the Flagler County School District, our neighbors, Flag, or Flagler County, and even St. John's County, since this project was a development of regional impact, and a large enough project that it had, that we had to take into consideration those counties that would be immediately affected. So, again, numerous review, and based on those numerous review, they were essentially for the approval of two things. One, which I'm going to go over right now, is the approval of the comprehensive plan and future land use map amendment for the subject property. The previous flume designation for the property was, of course, when it came to the city, it, it retained its Flagler County future land use map designation of agriculture and timberlands and conservation. When we went through the DRI review process, that included a need to change the future land use map designation of the property to what it is now, which is this hatch pattern, which is the DRI mixed use designation, and about a thousand acres of conservation area, which is shown in light green. In addition to the map change, there were also site, site-specific policies that were included as part of that comprehensive plan amendment. And those specific policies are related to the eventual expansion of these conservation areas to eventually cover about thirty-one, thirty-two hundred acres. There's policies in there regarding the conversion of land uses, so that we maintain the balance of residential and non-residential uses within this DRI. And of course, within that DRI mixed use designation, it specifies the land use and intensities that are to be permitted within the site. And of course, there were also text amendments to ensure that when development starts to go vertical, that the appropriate, appropriate infrastructure will be put in place, the roads, the sewer, and, and the water lines. The other major approval that this project has received is the development of regional impact development order. Again, that entailed the review of various public agencies. They reviewed the environmental quality of the site, they reviewed the, the need to protect particular areas of the site. And again, so, the result of that was a development order with conditions. And within that development order, order with conditions, some of those conditions pertain to protecting the environmental qualities of the sites, so designating which areas are to be left alone or undeveloped. Again, ensuring a balanced development, again, trying to maintain that balance between the residential, non-residential uses, and conditions that require the developer to commit and contribute to the, the provision of adequate public infrastructure to serve the site. And within that review of the development order, the site was reviewed for consistency with a comprehensive plan, and of course, it was found... The approved development program for the site is essentially the following. It's seven thousand residential units, three hundred fifty-four thousand square feet of retail. You have office uses, civic uses, and probably the big component of this project, unlike some of the historic development of Palm Coast, is that there's about two million square feet that will be available for development as an employment center. So, again, just going back to review, the approvals for both the, the comp plan amendment, future land use map amendment, and the development order for the DRI was approved by City Council on October fifth, twenty-ten, and that was the original approval. As you know, we went to the state, since they challenged the DO and the comprehensive plan approval, we were able to settle an agreement or negotiate, negotiate a settlement with DCA, and of course, we had some remedial amendments that were then approved in July of this past year. And so, again, this project has now been through the appeal process, and it's passed those appeal periods. So, the current request before you, bringing down from the thirty-five thousand foot level to about the thirty thousand foot level, this is a proposed rezoning to master plan development. What it will do is that it will bring consistency between the zoning designation and the flume designation, and it's also consistent with the conditions of the DO. So, now we're starting to get into some of the implementation of the development order. The development order required the applicant to apply for a conceptual master plan development on, on the property, to bring the, the zoning and, and flume designation into consistency. In the future, what we would see are what we call incremental master plan developments, and those would include the specific development criteria outlined in development order. So, when a particular parcel, here we're, we're talking about sixty-three hundred acres, developer sells, let's say, five hundred acres, and now need to come into direct entitlements to that five hundred acres, you will see what we call the incremental master plan development, which will lay out what the entitlements would be for those five hundred acres, and, and the, for other issues that would be included in there, such as the setbacks and other development particulars. And they'll eventually have, of course, have to come back for a plating, a site plan, and eventually a building permit. Under the analysis, the, the land development code has various criteria to be reviewed for, for any proposed rezoning and for any proposed master plan development. I won't go through all those, and just to summarize, essentially, the, the main ones would be that the rezoning shall not be in conflict with the public interest. Of course, the development order and the review by the, by the various agencies have provided those safeguards within the development order to make sure that these are not in conflict with public interest, that the proposed development is not in conflict with public interest. Is it consistent with a comprehensive plan? Review of the DRI DO has, has proven that it is consistent. Does it propose a significant financial liability or hardship for the city? In reviewing the DRI, and in reviewing what the potential impacts of that magnitude of development that was proposed, we took into account the levels of service and the, the need for utilities to serve this project, and based on those impacts, development order conditions were, or, or conditions are within the development order that essentially the developer commits to, to contribute lands for, for things such as parks and schools or a police substation, and, and in some instances, proportionate share contributions for the development of infrastructure. Its impact on environmental natural area, again, through the review in the DRI and the, and the flume amendment, we have conditions within the DO that will make it mitigate the impact on the environmental qualities of this site, and those could include things like conservation of land, the management and creation of habitat within the property, education programs for the future homeowners of this site, you know, for, for bear, bear mitigation, to keep the people and bears apart. Its impact on the economy, the rezoning, of course, will have a favorable impact on the City of Palm Coast. This project will bring not only additional housing sites, which we have plenty of within, within the city, but additional opportunities for employment centers, retail centers, and of course, on the housing side, a, a greater diversity of the type of housing product we can offer within the city. Beyond the quarter acre lots, this particular project creates a village center, where you will probably have the opportunity to provide something like studios, or lofts, or live workspace above commercial areas. I mean, that's, those are all possibilities within, that's created by creating such a village center. The change in conditions, again, moving on from being a retirement suburban community, which was, which is how Palm Coast was originally founded, to becoming a more full-service community with, with a greater variety of households, with a greater amount of workforce. So, the city, I think, has made a, a goal or an objective to find additional economic opportunities for creating these employment centers, and that, and that's provided within this project. And finally, compatibility with uses and development patterns. Again, different from how Palm Coast was originally founded, where we had quarter acre lots, and our commercial uses were mainly concentrated along arterials, the major arterials we have in the city. As, as we progressed, we, we started approving these DRIs, Town Center DRI, the Palm Coast Park DRI are two good examples. Just continuing with that theme, where we're trying to create more of these mixed use nodes, this particular project follows in that, in that example. At this time, staff recommends that based on our review of the criteria within the land development code, City Council approved the proposed rezoning of the subject property to master plan development from agriculture.
Council questions?
Well, say, does this property include any wellheads or potential or planned wellheads?
As, as part of the development, the DRI development order, there, there, we've identified the potential for about twenty-five well sites on site, and based on what's, what was negotiated in the, in the utility agreement, those well sites at the city's request could eventually be turned over to us for, as a resource for additional water supply.
But they wouldn't impact any of the housing and educational aspects that you've hit on?
No, sir. Those two would be compatible. We would, it would be designed around wherever those, those wellhead sites are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I think it, it was pointed out at the time that while you're going to have development, there is actually a net beneficial gain in water from these well sites.
Yes, sir.
In other words, they more than compensate for the proposed development.
Yes.
Other questions? Mr. Lewis?
Just one question, Jose, on the MPD, as we move into that area now, how soon or, what is the future plans of the development in terms of getting some sort of development?
Dan, you going to start tomorrow?
I, I believe that for the developer. I, I believe they're more in tune, they, they, they're constantly in contact with, with potential develop, other, other people who might potentially need land for, for development, but that's certainly their privy, and I'm not privy to those conversations.
No.
One question. Jose, this is the project that contains the wildlife conservation corridor that the city worked really hard on?
Yes, sir. More background. This is the, the DRI, or the, the property known as Neoga Lakes. To the north of it is the Old Brick Township DRI. And really, looking at that whole, really beyond both of those projects, and looking at the, the, what we call the gap parcel between where, where the city is annexed and the existing, the, the old city boundaries, we looked at the, the, really, the, the habitat and the environmental qualities that are available for, out there and available for enhancement, and really created a, a corridor that essentially, it stretches from even north of, of, of the county line into St. John's and into the Metansus River Basin, on down through Old Brick, the Old Brick Township DRI, and through the Neoga Lakes DRI. So, yes, it, it's, to make a short answer very long.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Is there a proportionality?
There is. There is a conversion chart that, well, I, I think the better way to answer it would be that, that there are, I'm trying to think of a good way to put this, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, the, the developer has committed to developing actually the employment center first.
In other words, taking more entitlements in that 500 acres and you wind up with property at the end that has no entitlements left? Is there a proportionality?
There is. There is a conversion chart that, well, I think the better way to answer it would be that there are, I'm trying to think of a good way to put this, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, the developer has committed to developing actually the employment center first, and that would be the first phase, part of the first phase of development. And being able to move forward, I mean, the eventuality of having space left over or with no entitlements, I think it's pretty much spelled out in what was approved in the development program. I don't think I answered your question as clearly as I could have.
Well, the bottom line is if you use up all your entitlements before you use up all your land, you're still capped on the amount of entitlements.
Thank you, yes.
If the developer chooses to have lift-over land, bless his or her heart.
And, well, yes, that would be their prerogative, barring that they come back and amend the DRI and go through the process again.
We would be very cautious. I think it's, you talked about the employment center. I think just worthy of note for the people listening, one of the shortfalls in Flagler County and Palm Coast in particular is the ratio of residential to non-residential. Here you're adding residential, here you're also adding non-residential, but when you aggregate this DRI into the city, there is a net improvement in the ratio of residential to commercial and industrial. So we're ahead of the game in this one. Any other questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public, and anything the public wishes to be heard on this agenda item.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I'm hearing about 7,000 units and 3,000 units and all that. And I read in the papers where Palm Coast alone, Palm Coast, has over 550 foreclosed homes. I don't know, I'm just asking the question. So I'm not, are these buildings gonna be, you know, in the future? You know, are we gonna get a chance to either destroy these foreclosed homes or try to sell them? That's a lot of homes, 500 or 550. I forgot what the exact number was. Why are we building when we have so many homes that are vacant? You know, that's all I, just came to my mind.
Next speaker.
Bob Jergel, Palm Coast. I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. You were a great proponent of the desal program because you said this many, many times, we're running out of water, we don't have any water, the aquifer's going down, we've got an emergency, we've gotta go to the sea for water. All of a sudden, you say with anything, you're gonna drill 23 wellheads here to get water from where? If the aquifer's going down in previous times, why do you think you'd get more water on 23 more wellheads if there's no aquifer?
We'll get you an answer. Next speaker.
Dan Camp from Rayonier, Terra Point. We have gone, as Ray and Jose have pointed out, we've gone through a lot of analysis and review, and it's actually been a very good planning process to make sure lots of things are considered and covered, in particular, the water. Water is a very, very important issue. And to answer your question, sir, it's been a great broadening of the actual wellhead surface area that it's drawn from. And that in a combination of the significant... Yeah, I've got it talking to this. The significance of also applying very strict water conservation measures on the houses as well as the landscape, all of those comply to bring down our water usage to about half of what the normal house here in Palm Coast would use. That's consistent with the Water Star program that the district has. We have, I think in this entire process, we've gone through a lot of detailed analysis. We're pretty proud of the plan. We think it deals with, one of the key things that the mayor said to us when we first started out is make sure it's not, it's about jobs, it's about applying for people a place to work, it's a balanced community. We think we've achieved that. We've also done the, from an environmental standpoint, both energy and water, from a land use standpoint, we've got a broad mix of uses, the timing of those uses are in place. So this process, as far as the rezoning here, is really, as Jose pointed out, it's to get the designation of county agriculture to a master plan development so it's consistent with the city's regulations. So we appreciate all the work and effort that staff has put into it. And any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, approach the podium and close the public portion of the meeting. Go back to the council. Mr. Maker, do you want to handle the question about increased number of wellheads and the declining aquifer? Or do you want me to...
What is it? What guy said it? No, but I will. No, it's exactly what Mr. Camp said. When the desal project was being proposed, water use was up, growth was up, growth has slowed down, water use, conservation measures have kicked in, and we expanded the city reboundaries by, what, 10 square miles, which expands the area that you can mine for water if you want to look at it that way. And for that, but the area has increased.
There's no aquifer, oh, come on, Jerry.
Well, that's not exactly what they were saying. What they were looking at was projected water uses out to 2025, saying if we continued on those same population projection curves, we'd be running out of water. Those population projection curves aren't there anymore. And through other mechanisms, like Mr. Adams and the way they operate the wellfield now was different under our consent of use permits because we're rotating wells around and limiting certain wells from drawing down areas that might impact wetlands. There's a host of things that have been implemented to stretch the water supply out, but the biggest thing is this increase in area which allows you to place your wells further out, which limits the impact. The aquifer's still there, what you're limiting is the impact on the drawdown.
Additional questions? Comments? A motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt ordinance to 2012 XX relating to the zoning map amendment from agriculture to MPD for the property known as Nioga Lakes DRI.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Meeker?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. I think we will table Agenda Item Number Six.
If you, yeah, it doesn't have to be continued, but yes. It's tied into the...
Whatever. We are not going to address Agenda Item Number Six at this time because of the action on Agenda Item Number Four, which relates to it. Agenda Item Number Seven, Improving One-Year Contract Extension, Fox Landscape. Mr. Landon.
Mayor City Council, three years ago, we had, went out to bid, and actually after we went out to bid, we then went out for proposals for the maintenance of our medians and other miscellaneous properties. At that time, we didn't have crews that were, had the skills and the knowledge to do the detailed work on the medians. However, we knew that we had more coming with our new streets and that it'd be more cost-efficient for us to eventually take that on as in-house labor. I am gonna stall as long as I can stall, guys. So at that time, we split up the labor to take care of our medians. Very good. And issued a contract to Fox Landscaping for $460,000 a year to take on a portion of our landscape maintenance. And we also hired a city crew to take on the other portion. The contract with Fox Landscaping was for three years. It had two one-year extension options. And because of the difficulty of that whole process, City Council asked that that come back to this body for a decision as to whether to extend the contract for the additional one year, twice or once, or with the idea of possibly bringing the contract or canceling the contract and having the work be completed totally by city crews. At your workshop last week, we proposed kind of the easy solution, and that is leave status quo along. City Council asked us to take a look at what it would cost for the expansion of the city crew to take on the entire project and cancel the contract. So very quickly, Tony Capella, our Superintendent in Streets and Drainage, with the help of the rest of public work staff, put together a cost estimate. You have a cost estimate, you pack it, that should have been in marked draft because we then took it to finance and had them fine-tune it. And so what Tony has for you tonight is kind of the final cost estimate we have with having our finance department also taking a look at the numbers and also better explanation as to exactly what we're including in this contract. Because it's not just medians, it's a variety of other sites. So Tony, if you'll take it from here, please.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Tony Capella, City, Palm Coast Streets Superintendent. Presenting a little slideshow so that you might be able to kind of get an understanding of exactly what this contract entails. First picture here is a picture of the wastewater treatment plant. And that would be part of the contract. This is Water Plant One. This is right behind Hero's Park, if you're not familiar with that location.
What's the inner color blue in there?
And this is Water Plant Two. In case you don't know what that is, that's off of Citation.
Both reasonably well-hidden from the public view.
Water Plant Three, also hidden.
But very picturesque from here.
And this is one of the medians that we're talking about, Palm Coast Parkway and the Gateway Sign. This is the section in front of Mother Seaton from Pine Lakes all the way down to Belterra. And this is one of the fire stations. It would include all five of the current fire station locations. This is one of the well sites. This would be kind of a typical well site that's scattered throughout. Another picture of a typical well site, this is actually out on US-1. This is a typical lift station, a little bit different than the well sites. And then we get into the labor cost. After looking at all of the different locations, we came up with seven additional employees, one being a supervisor, one being an EO3, an EO2, two EO1s, and two maintenance workers.
Equipment operator.
Equipment operator, I'm sorry. Equipment operator.
The staff load's not with us.
I was thinking, John, Mary, this is the one you needed.
I apologize. The next slide is the cost of equipment. We looked at what it would take to actually get this work done. Four trucks, three mower trailers, four mowers, miscellaneous tools, which would be blowers, weed whackers, that kind of stuff, chemicals, which would be fertilizer, insecticides, mulch, fuel costs for the year, additional overhead, coming out to a total annual cost of $83,585. Add them both together, and we came up with a total annual landscape cost of $408,000, And that's short and sweet.
And compare that with the Fox...
The Fox Landscaping that we're asking for the renewal is $460,000 and...
200.
200.
Council questions?
Your Honor, I got a few, Tony. Seven people, one of whom is a supervisor, am I right here? Because I'm seeing eight on the packet. I've got three main workers.
Again, that was a draft.
Okay. But staying with it for a moment, because some of the things here hit me in the wrong side of my fiscal mind. We're talking about people that basically cut the grass and trim bushes and hedges and things, am I right? And they're lawn maintenance people?
Correct.
Okay. And do we typically pay our lawn maintenance people somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 a year?
That's total package.
Including fringe.
Correct. Everything.
Okay. And a supervisor, do we have supervisors on the payroll? Well, that's not a fair question to ask. Supervisor, I'm looking at 59, too. That's almost twice as much as what the Flagler School District hires a teacher for. Seems a little high to me. I mean, I'm just asking.
That's the burden rate.
Okay.
Not just fringes, but the whole cost of workers' comp and taxes and all of those costs associated with it, it's the whole personnel cost.
So these personnel costs, then, are in line with what you're already paying people to do the things that Fox does not do?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could add to that, all these are existing categories. We already have existing employees, so we're not creating new positions. These all have, we have people in these positions, it would be adding to it. So the question is, how much to pay them has already been answered a long time ago. This is just saying if you added to those positions, this is what the cost would be.
I just, it blew my mind that we would pay a supervisor almost $60,000 to supervise a lawn crew, you know, again, because a teacher in Flagler Schools starts in the mid-30s.
Tony, maybe explain a little bit as to, this is not your crew leader, if you would. Actually, your EO3, your equipment operator three, is more of your crew leader. I think it's, I was kind of anticipating that question. And once again, the actual base salary is substantially less than that figure.
I understand. I did put something together here for you. Supervisor trains and evaluates landscape maintenance crews, interprets job assignments to staff under charge, and assigns duties to the crews, varying size and skills, establishes and adjusts work procedures to meet schedules, plans and coordinates landscape maintenance at various sites, analyzes, resolves work problems to maximize efficiency. What we're looking at is a leader that is gonna be looking at outside-the-box, new ways, new methods, different types of equipment, you know, working in the office, putting together There would be a managerial side of that supervisor. It's not just a guy that'd be out there on a lawnmower, you know, giving those kind of directions. This would be the full-boat supervisory role.
And I appreciate that, and it answers some questions, but still, at the end of the day, he's supervising, what, six people?
No, it'd be a little bit more than that.
Okay.
Tony, I think, get into some more of the details. As far as, we already have people that do this that you would put under, you know, to explain that to the council, please.
Three years ago? Three years ago, we added additional four staff members to take on the responsibilities of a landscape-type crew, which, the other important part of landscape is pest control, chemicals. You need licensing for that. Also, irrigation experience. These are trades that you don't learn overnight. It takes years of learning and training to get yourself familiar with that kind of a system. So this crew would be working in conjunction with those four individuals who are currently working on the Belterra medians, the Old Kings Road, the interchanges at 100, all of that other stuff that we've been gearing up to get this type of experience and knowledge so that we can have this type of leadership in-house. Okay, thank you.
I would like to add one other thing. A good example of that is irrigation system. You know, when a vehicle runs off the road and goes into a median and you see the water squirting up, what we'd have to do is call... the water squirting up, what we'd have to do is call one of our local maintenance, landscape maintenance companies to come in. I don't even think it was Fox lots of times, that had an expertise in, in irrigation systems. Tony has actually developed that in-house, so now, instead of us going out and say, oh yeah, we need to call somebody, we, we maintain it, repair it ourselves. Much more cost-efficient than to actually call out someone, and it's a lot quicker because we're already out there. So there's a lot of benefits, and that is part of trying to enhance the, the overall program. This will take a, a step further, if you want us to, to take it on, or, or you can continue with the split of contracting with Fox for another year, or, and having us do a portion of it, or having us do all of it. That's really what your decision tonight is.
Mr. Meeker. As I'm looking, as I'm looking at this, we're basically discussing the difference between, what, thirty thousand dollars?
About sixty.
Fifty-two?
Four oh eight, four sixty. About fifty, okay. What, are there other intangibles that a privately-owned business contributes to the local economy outside of what a government position would?
That's what the additional overhead, yeah. I don't know if Chris wants to talk about that.
Yeah. You, you're talking about intangibles as far as...
Well, they own space, or, I mean, they, they either rent a building or own a building. Somebody's paying property taxes on that. There's, there's other things that a private organization pays into the local economy that government organizations do not. And I'd like to know if we have a rough estimate of what that is, how that offsets the difference in cost.
I, I don't think we're prepared for...
No.
It's, it's very intangible, hard to determine if the, how much this contract contributes to that particular private company also. In other words, if they stay in business, which, you know, we're counting on the fact Fox would, they would still own that building, and it really wouldn't change a lot of those intangibles.
Well, that would be an interesting question, if, in bringing on these additional people and saving the city fifty thousand dollars in the process, would Fox still stay in business?
Do not know.
Other question?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Question?
Yes.
Please.
This is another difficult question that maybe you don't know the answer to. My guess is you don't. But, do you have any idea how many people Fox uses to complete this, just this portion of the work? Not their entire business, but just this portion of the work?
I have no idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Just a quick question. The difference we're talking about is fifty, roughly fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars But, we're talking about a business as opposed to a government-run operation. I think a, a business bring many other things to a, a city, in addition to the, the people that they're, they're bringing to work here. And I, I think before we make that jump over from business to government, we, we see if that fifty thousand dollars is worth the jump. I'm not sure it is yet, so, so I, I'm not, I, I'm not sure that we, if we had looked at this at the workshop, I perhaps would have a better feel for it, but I, I'm a little hesitant at the moment, see if that fifty thousand is worth the jump.
Well, that, that raises a question in my mind, actually, two questions. If we were to decide that it's worthwhile to bring this in-house, how long would it take to get this group up and running? I doubt very much that you've got seven people sitting out there waiting to be hired as of tomorrow, and you certainly don't have the equipment. How long would it take? If, if council gave you the direction to say, we're gonna bring all this work in-house, how long would it take you to gear up?
We would have ninety days.
Can you do it in ninety days?
Sure.
See, my thought was, by extending this contract for a year, it gives you time to, to seek, if we decide to go in that direction, to seek out the best qualified individuals and, and bring them onboard gradually.
That, that is definitely an option, too, is to, we, we were, the whole game plan was, was at least within five years, bringing them onboard, because if you go back out to bid, you're gonna go through that same process of having out-of-town firms try to undercut, then you have that problem of your, your landscaping and the medians, et cetera, suffering because they, they cut, short-changed us, et cetera. That's what happens to a lot of cities, and you can actually see it in their medians. Do it now, do it a year from now, e, either one, and those are all options.
But there's a lot to be said, is there not, for having control? Because in our workshop, Tony and Richard both said that Tony has to spend some of his time now going out and, and looking over what Fox is doing, which, you know, you bring it in-house, and he's doing it already.
Yep, absolutely, control is, is a benefit.
Another question. Let's suppose that we proceed over the next year, because I'm presuming we're gonna extend this contract for a year, but let's, let's presume that we decide to bring it in-house, and we bring on those seven additional people. Well, you can only use a mower for cutting grass, but does the, do those additional seven people give your department more flexibility?
Absolutely.
Hurricane comes in, you move from cutting grass to picking up tree stumps.
The list would, would be a lengthy one, yes.
So I mean, there, there is a collateral benefit?
Absolutely, yes.
Other council questions?
Yeah, I have another question.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
I'm sorry, but I didn't do the math. Math. What is the total initial capital cost for you to gear up to do this? And, and I guess, Mr. Landon, is, is it funded, or how could it be funded from this budget?
It's funded now.
The funds would come from the fact we wouldn't have the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars we would be spending.
But isn't it only a hundred and fifty-three remaining, or something, for the year? And I don't know, like, I don't, let me ask my first question. What is the total capital cost? Because that'll help me with the second part.
The total capital cost, if you're talking, what we have to purchase for equipment?
Right.
Would be minus the, the additional overhead and the, the eight thousand dollars for fuel.
No, that's an annual cost.
What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Right. If you look at the, the original agenda packet item, it, it tells you that we have some pickups were advertised for seven years, mower trailers for ten, zero-turn mowers for three years, rear discharge mowers for three years, and the push mowers for one, and the small equipment for one. So you'd have to add all that up. But my understanding is that the, the capital cost for all that new equipment would come out of the fleet fund, out of the fleet reserve, and be advertised over, back to the department over those periods of time.
I, I just added up what you gave me. It's about eighty, ninety thousand dollars is what the original draft was. And yes, what Richard said is, it would come out of the fleet fund, which is where we have our reserves for those kind of capital expenditures. They would be replenished every year by, out of the operating costs, and then, so your operating costs there would actually come out of your, the, the annual cost would come out of your operating budget. But, but, Mr. DiLorenzo, the, contract would expire in ninety days, and so then we would no longer pay the contract, but we would be paying these expenses. So that's where the money would come from, and it's all currently in the, the streets' budget. So, it's, it's there. Instead of coming out contractual services, it would come out personnel and some of the other line items.
Yeah, I understand that, because it crosses over two budgets, and that's why it's, that's where the, even though it says it's only one fifty-three now, it's actually, the rest is funded in next year's budget, because the contract crosses over two budget cycles.
Right. So, so the money is budgeted, it, it's just a matter of how you, how you decide you want to spend it.
Okay, thank you.
Other council questions? Seeing no one approach the podium, a closed public course meeting, go back to council, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, since we're talking about making the extension. I'd like to go ahead and, and recommend that we approve the first one-year extension option with Fox Landscape, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
I'll second with discussion.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion on the motion.
This is, this is really difficult. I, I have very little interest, other than the, the flexibility portion, which I like. I, I don't have a real big interest in expanding the number of employees that we have. However, I do like the cost savings, but I'm not sure we're actually comparing apples to apples here. We're comparing a three-year-old contract to the, to your cost estimate that you were able to do right now. And I'm not sure, you know, that, that's really an apples-to-apples comparison, so with that, that's my only comment.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, it's been moved and seconded.
Your Honor, I, I mean, I, the, the numbers tell the story. I mean, what's best for the citizens of Palm Coast is to turn this over to Richard and Tony.
All right, the motion on the table is to approve a one-year extension of the contract that's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries four to zero. Four to one, I can't even count.
Close enough.
But just, just for the record, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Meeker?
Yes.
Mayor Nettis?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion's passed four to one.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight, resolution authorizing a work order for CPH Engineers to provide engineering services, water treatment plant number three, phase-two wells, electrical distribution project. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is actually a segment of a project that has been going on for some time, and that is, we have twelve well sites out west of US One, and we have to give power to them. We thought we had it worked out where the FPNL would receive an easement from the property on a Rainier Timber Company. They were not able to work out the language of the easement. We have easements, so this is Plan B, which is for the power lines to be part of our assets towards the wells, and so we would have to design and install the lines from the water plant out to the well sites. This was discussed by City Council at a workshop a few weeks ago. You asked that we try one last time to see if we couldn't encourage Rainier to grant the easement to FPNL, to have it be an FPNL project. I tried, was unsuccessful, and, and so we are back with the designed contract for this electrical system to get the power out to our, our well sites that are already drilled, basically ready to go, except for power. At that time, you also had a lot of questions about how this contract would work, and the, the different subcontractors, sub-engineers, and so we came prepared to address that today. Am I turning this over to Richard or Steve? I'm turning this over to Steve, so Steve, you'll go from there with the detail, please.
I'll take it. Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Steve Flanagan, your Public Works Utility Development Manager. We have here for your consideration today, as Mr. Landon said, a proposal for design electrical services for what we are basically calling Water Plant Three, Well Field, Phase Two. As Mr. Landon said, we actually tried to get FPNL to provide services for this, these sites. There's twelve well sites in this phase-two development for the water plant, and we were unsuccessful with that, with multiple efforts. This is the Plan B, as Mr. Landon said. We've, we've gone through a statement of qualifications for electrical design services. We had two qualifications packets come in, one from a Chem and Creed Engineers, and one from CPH Engineers. They both had subconsultants in their package as, as a good portion of their package, based on that they don't specialize in electrical designs of this magnitude. This is a highly specialized field of design, and we were blessed, in, in my opinion, that we have a fairly local company, Jacksonville, that specializes in this magnitude of electrical design, that's done work at the Cape, city of Ocala, and such locations. They more than impressed us with what they've done in the past and their level of expertise. I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll say that I'm not really that interested personally in getting into the electrical business, but it is a new challenge for us in the utility business, and one that I look forward to based on the level of challenge. And there's, I have little doubt that we will succeed in that challenge. And I, I would like to introduce, we have two representatives from CPH Engineers here with us tonight, that's Brett Markovitz and Alan Baker, and two representatives from Fred Wilson and Associates out of Jacksonville, that's William Wilson and Floyd Faskin, and I'll be glad to try and answer any questions you have, or I'm sure they will as well. Thank you.
Council questions?
I've got some.
Mr. Meeker. Steve, who's actually responsible for putting this thing in the ground in the end? Or who would, who would, who would be the contractor for it?
We would bid those services out after we have it designed.
So it's important that the council understands that the cost that we're talking about right now doesn't put a thing in the ground?
That's correct, sir.
The, and, and first off, as I start some of these comments, I want to make it clear, while I don't know Fred Wilson or Bailey Engineering by reputation, I do know CPH by reputation, and I hold them in very high regard.
I appreciate that.
They, they've had a, a number of projects that have been successfully completed with the city, they're a quality engineering firm, this is nothing against them, this is my own personal bias about the way this contract has been written up for our consideration. Why do I need somebody to handle coordination? Why isn't my professional staff handling this?
Well, I wouldn't use the word coordination.
They, they did in here.
When, I understand. I, I assume what you're speaking to is the coordination or the integration, I would use maybe the integration, of the two electrical designers.
It, it, they just said, they will be responsible for client liaison and overall project coordination, is that what you mean?
Yes. But what you, what you have in place right now, and, and I wish I was as far along as Mr. Landon led us into, as far as what's built out in the field. It's, this project's been a struggle on many accounts, with land acquisition, contractor building the sites, and ultimately, this electrical issue that we're here for today. That said, what, what you have today is a construction project to build twelve well sites, and a distribution or collection system of the raw water to go to our water plant three. Mr. Bailey, through Bailey Engineering, has designed the onsite electrical facilities, which I know, for me, even still, I think of, when I think of a well, I think of, okay, a little well and a pump, and you turn it on, and that's all there is to it. But our, our well field is a much more sophisticated system than just a well and you turn it on. It's, it's controlled through a twenty-million-dollar water plant that has the ability to turn wells off and on, and rotate them, as you spoke to earlier today. And it, it's a complicated electrical system. The integration between that system and what is the electrical distribution system, and I still, I'm, for many years, I've dealt with electrical, and dealing with our local power company, FPNL, to provide for our well field, pump station upgrades, all those kinds of things that we deal in as a water and wastewater utility that we need power for. That said, I'm still a neophyte when it comes to power. things that we deal in as a water and wastewater utility that we need power for. That said, I'm still a neophyte when it comes to power, okay? It is extremely important that we integrate those 12 wells and that electrical design with the electrical design of the distribution system. The amount of money that's in this proposal for Bailey Engineers, minimal, in my opinion. If this package wasn't a CPH package of, you know, the designer, the original designer for the well field, if you will, and now coming to the table as being the lead-in to the electrical design, I think we would have easily spent more money trying to put the two players together. I feel very lucky that we were able to get CPH, along with Fred Wilson and Associates, to put this package together, and I am very confident that we have a good package to do what we really don't want to do, but what we have a challenge to do today.
Do we end up having to run multiple lines to each well?
No, sir. The design will be very similar to what FPNL would have put in. The difference is, the major difference, in my opinion, is you will have one meter at what is the electrical substation that's adjacent to our Water Plant Three, as opposed to having 12 meters, you know, one meter at each wellhead location. Most of the rest of it will be very similar, design very similar. Now, the design will be at a higher level than FPNL does because the electrical designers here have to adhere to the NEC code versus FPNL's exempt from adhering straight to those kinds of codes. So you'll actually have a better-designed electrical distribution system, but if you tell my FPNL friends that, I'm going to tell them I didn't say it.
But is there some reason why the city staff isn't capable of working directly with Fred Wilson or Bailey Engineering, that any client liaison going on here?
We will be doing that, Mr. Meeker. We will be doing that, definitely. The client liaison is really the coordination of those designs, to make sure those designs match up and integrate with one another.
Well, and I don't have any problem with CPH survey. I don't have any problem with Fred Wilson's design. Okay, that's fine. And inspection during the construction is also fine. Why do I need Bailey to provide quality assurance and quality check and more coordination with the secondary power service to the wells?
I actually hope that we could get Bailey to do more of the work on this, to be honest with you, because Bailey has more local staff, more localized than Fred Wilson has, even being in Jacksonville. They actually have a field representative that, and to hearken back a little bit, Bailey actually did the design work for us for Water Plant Three, okay? So all the design that went into Water Plant Three is a Bailey design. Water Plant Three was an excellent project, worked out extremely well. Matter of fact, one of my pride and joys, having worked here at the utility. It was a very challenging water plant, but it was extremely well handled by many parties.
And the water treatment plant's a very complicated system. I can understand that. In my mind, I'm running power from point A to point B, and I don't see that as being overly complicated. I guess I think that if I've got engineering firms that are on recurring contracts with us, that were supposed to be large enough to provide multi-capabilities, and that's why we've got them on our recurring contract, I ought to be able to point to one of them and say, "Design this thing for me," without having to go out and do a bunch of sub-stuff, and now I'm paying overhead for that sub and overhead for that sub and on other project overhead for that sub and that sub.
Let me add some. First of all, our contracts are somewhat unique in that we do not allow CPH or McKimmon-Creid to mark up subconsultant's contracts. So CPH doesn't make any profit on the Bailey contract. Bailey is, Steve Bailey is CPH's EE. If you had a larger firm like CH Toom Hill or Malcolm Perney Arcadus, they probably have double Es on their staff, but then you pay the kind of prices you pay for a nationwide firm. But by the way, their double E might be in New York. Smaller to mid-sized firms will use more subconsultants. McKimmon-Creid's doing the design for the beachside sewer. McKimmon-Creid will sub out all the survey work to Danny Stevens out of Ormond Beach. If they have environmental work to do, they don't have an environmental scientist on staff, they're going to sub that, too. They'll sub it to CPH, because CPH does have environmental people on staff, but McKimmon-Creid doesn't. So it depends on what they have. You'll find a lot of the smaller consultants will sub out all their structural work, because they don't have structural engineers on staff. It's very common for these smaller to mid-sized firms, which is the only thing you're going to get locally, to sub out a lot of the subconsultant work.
Well, I look at the things that are, in particular, I went over Task C, the Construction Engineering Services, and I look at a number of the items, like I was looking at number three. Fred Wilson and Associates will check and review shop drawings, catalog data, diagrams, illustrations, et cetera. And in my mind, I went, "Why isn't CPH doing this, representing us, representing our best interests?"
Well, that's why we want a contract with CPH. When we have an issue, I don't care who they use as consultants, subconsultants, or onboard staff. If we have an issue, we go to CPH. If there's an issue with the design of the major power that Fred Wilson did, CPH is one that's going to, CPH's name is CPH Airs and Emissions Insurance. It's CPH that is ultimately responsible for the water getting out of the ground all the way till we deliver it to the customer, because they designed the plant, they designed the pipeline, they designed the wells, they designed the well equipment, and they designed the power to get there. Now, they had to use a subconsultant to do it, but CPH is ultimately responsible.
But later on, under five, Fred Wilson and Associates says they're going to make periodic visits to the site, observe the progress, report to the city, ask the amount of work complete. I kind of thought they'd be reporting to our liaison.
Every engineer will have their own representative out there. You won't find an engineer that will certify complete if they haven't had representation on site.
But Fred Wilson and Associates will not be required to make exhaustive or continuous onsite observations of the quality or quantity of the completed work.
That's right. They will do the inspection to the level that they feel comfortable when they certify complete. They are the double E that will be ultimately responsible, but we'll go to CPH. We won't go to Fred Wilson.
Why isn't Fred Wilson just going to us?
We don't have a contract with Fred Wilson.
Why don't we? Why aren't we just going direct to Fred Wilson?
Well, we could go through a long-grown-out bid process, and then we will have Fred Wilson design the electrical out there, and then we have CPH design the rest of it, and if point A doesn't connect to point B, we get two consultants pointing at each other and we're caught in the middle. We feel the best way to go is to have CPH responsible for the whole project, one end to the other, and they sub-c consultant with Fred Wilson, Bailey, and anybody else they need.
But under seven, it says that CPH and our subconsultants will not provide a record of the contractor's activities throughout the construction or notation, so the nature or the cost of extra work, or the changes that are ordered during construction or anything else.
Yeah, we do that on purpose to save money, because that's something our staff can do. Our staff are not engineers, so they can't certify complete. They can't certify the work was done according to design. The engineer is the only one that can do that.
And I've got all these guys looking over the same contract, yet under item 10, it says that CPH and the subcontract, subconsultants, will not be responsible for acts of emissions of the contractor, any other contractors, the subcontractors, the agency employees, or anybody else?
You'll find that in any consultant contract. They aren't going to be responsible for the contractor. They never will be.
I'm still not happy with this one, but that's...
Understood. Are there other counsel questions?
I just...
Mr. Lewis.
Frank just ran through all of my, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the right questions to ask, but I did look at the tasks of Construction Engineering Services, and I did have some questions. Frank just ran through all of them. Thank you, Frank, except for eight and six. And so perhaps, you might have already answered it, so if you have, just ignore my question. But on the construction, CPH is indicating the fact that they'll have no responsibility for the item listed six or eight, and I think you already answered those questions in terms of the umbrella role that CPH plays and the fact that they have the responsibility in terms of responsibility of the subcontractors, but then they say they don't have that responsibility. So maybe it's the wording that bothers all the needs, since I'm looking at words and not at engineering capabilities.
If I can take that, Mr. Lewis. I think what you're really looking at is, as Mr. Adams said, CPH is the larger umbrella. They're going to be responsible that this entire project, and when I say entire project works, that means the electrical distribution system and each and every wellhead, and that water flows to our Water Plant Number Three the way it should. Mr. Baker that's here designed those 12 wellheads and that distribution system to get to Water Plant Three. So that has to still function properly, and until they're all running and working, we don't know technically that it's functioning properly. Then what you have is Fred Wilson and Associates is going to be responsible as the double E that this electrical distribution system is designed to meet all national electric codes and that it is going to function to its design capability. So they're going to be responsible for this electrical distribution design, but ultimately, CPH is responsible that the entire system comes together and works. Now, of course, in that picture, that sounds simple to me, anyway, but you've got contractors that got to be a part of that puzzle, and as Mr. Meeker talked about, field visits, each and every engineer that has a seal, and that I respect for having that seal and the education process and testing that they've gone through, wants to make sure that their seal is not compromised by a contractor that doesn't do their job. And thus, the electrical designer in this case is going to want to come out at a minimum to assure that he's satisfied with his design is being built per his design. Now, we try and limit that so that we don't spend any more money in design and construction service than we absolutely have to, and that's one of the reasons I said we tried to work with Fred Wilson and Associates and Bailey Engineer to use some of Bailey's talent that's more localized to try and save some money on the overall construction services contract.
Mr. Lewis referred to item 10, paragraph 10, page 7, where it says, "CPH and our subcontractors will not be responsible for acts of emissions of the contractor." What is the contractor that is referred to there? Are you talking about the construction contractor?
Sounds like that would be the construction contractor.
So CPH is not saying we're not responsible for our subcontractors. We are not responsible for the person who's actually going to put the sticks in the ground?
Right. Yes, sir.
Other counsel questions?
Just one, Your Honor.
Mr. McGuire.
We're doing this because of the inability of Rainier and FPL to reach an accord. Since the future, we're looking to put some more wellheads out at the end of the world. Are we going to go through this again?
No.
Are you going to get battery-operated wellheads?
They taught us well. We have language in there that says that they will grant the easement to FPNL as part of our agreement with Rainier, subject to them agreeing to language. It's that subject to that they taught us well, and we won't do that again.
Thank you.
That's a bit intuition. Other counsel questions? Open to meeting for the public and for the public wish to be heard on this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Meeting back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You got a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Meeker?
No.
Mayor Nettis?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed four to one.
Thank you very much. This brings us to the consent agenda, items nine through 11. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone for the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda? Please give us your name. Limit your contribution to three minutes.
My name's Richard Bellble. I've got several things I'd like to discuss today. First is the red light cameras. I don't know if anybody's done any research on these cameras, but they're a scam, and that's what I mean, a scam. Any study that's ever been done by the state of Florida, around the United States, or around the world, have proved these cameras are all in here for one purpose, to make money. I have 800 pages of documented proof to show what goes on with these cameras. ATS, American Traffic Solutions, right here, received money from Goldman Sachs and Warren Buffett. Now, believe me, those two entities do not believe in public safety, and those cameras were sold for public safety, and they do anything but for public safety. They are strictly there for money. They've hired a company in Chicago, of all places, can you imagine that, Chicago, to do their public works, to go out there and promote these cameras. Here I show Kansas City, Missouri, red light cameras increase accidents. A study in Texas shows by increasing the amber by a second and a half to two seconds reduces the number of tickets and citations issued and reduces accidents by 90 percent. You don't need the cameras in this city. All they are is for money. If anybody would like any of this information, feel free to ask. I have it. I have it available. I have it on the disk right here, and I have more at home. So that's one of the issues. Number two issue would be for the trash haulers. The trash haulers need to put a recycle plant in. The dumping is getting outrageous. By putting in a recycle plant, and they've done that in San Jose, California, and you can watch it on TV, they've increased making money on recycle items, as plastic, paper, and about 80 percent of the trash is paper. By putting, and you can also put people to work with this. It lowers your dumping fee, and it makes money, and you bring other cities into it, and they also make money on it. So we need to keep this going. Another item on this is if these people want to put natural gas into their vehicles, that's their problem. It's not the Palm Coast taxpayers' problem. 50 cents every month on that is ridiculous. They can put that in their own place. They're in business. They can do it themselves. And this fuel surcharge, we don't need to give them that money. Why are we paying them to pick up the trash? They're in business to do this. Pardon?
15 seconds.
So those are the two items. I had one more to go with, but I'll bring that up at the next council meeting. So remember, traffic light cameras are a scam. So rethink it and look at it.
Thank you, sir. If you have any literature that you want to give to the city clerks, you will distribute to us.
I can tell you right here, I can give them a website to go to.
No, sir. If you have anything tangible that you want to give to council, give it to the city clerk.
Okay.
Otherwise, you can send us all an email or a piece of paper or whatever.
You can pick up all this information. It's on the web. It's all information that's... It's all information that's not in court.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Back to council. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, we'll start with you.
I have nothing to offer, Your Honor.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes, sir. I have something. Recently, the Florida Trend magazine, which we get here at City Hall, and some of us get, I guess, aside from that, they look at the various regions in Florida, southwest, southeast, Miami, central, northeast, and northwest. And this issue that just came out, Palm Coast got a plug. And Palm Coast was mentioned as bringing a new approach to businesses in Flagler County through its creation of the Palm Coast Business Assistance Center. So Palm Coast is now being recognized as having created activities and assistance to businesses in central Florida. So I just wanted to make that note.
Thank you, Mr. Harman. Mr. DiLorenzo.
No, nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Meeker.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
And I have nothing. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. No.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Only good things. Nestor's going to pull up our latest and greatest video postcard for the TV camera, so people who haven't seen it will have an opportunity to see it at home. I like to highlight the fact that we have, this past weekend, the regional, a regional soccer tournament that we've never hosted in the past. It brought in, I believe, around 50 teams. Maybe, Mr. Meeker, you can confirm that, but...
I don't have the numbers, but that would be typical for a regional cup.
We also had our professional futures men's tennis tournament here that went on all last week. Both of those are directly related to, you know, the facilities we have here and our efforts to bring in those visitors. Also was announced last Friday that we have been awarded a state soccer tournament. These are tournaments that are going to bring in, once again, hundreds, if not thousands, of families, or at least family members, all because of the Indian Trail Sports Complex. The comments we're receiving are really extremely positive, and they compare it to other facilities, and oftentimes, our facility, not just what we have to offer as far as the quality of the grass, but also the upkeep and the fact the restrooms are clean and that they are impressed with our maintenance of the facilities and what we offer, and the fact the city is backing it. They recognize that. And it's a great partnership with our local clubs that are going to try to bring in more and more of these tournaments, bring in more and more visitors. It will help our local businesses. We do have a challenge with this state tournament coming up later on this month. It's the same week as race week, or the same weekend as Daytona 500, and our hotels are already full. It's a tough challenge, because the teams don't really know who's going to come and where they're going to go until the last minute. So we have been reaching out to our friends at the Chamber and Tourist Development Council, having them call to see what kind of accommodations we can offer these families coming in with their soccer teams. So it's kind of a nice challenge to have, but it's really too bad that the timing couldn't be a little different. One weekend different, we could have filled up hotels two weekends. All right, with that, that's the only thing I had, other than we just wanted to, once again, do a little bragging about our staff. People, I think, have a hard time believing that our video team, those guys sitting back there in the corner of all these council meetings are the ones that actually put together this video, that the words and everything was all part of staff effort and just the whole design and effort here. That, I want to stress, this isn't just about this one video postcard. This is just the start of the campaign to get the word out about your favorite Florida. Nestor, take it from there. I love it every time.
I like it better every time I see it.
Mayor, that's all we have for this evening.
Mr. Lewis.
We're adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.